Mr. Mayor, if you want to hit the gavel, I'll call the meeting. Thank you. I'll call this meeting to order of the Morris Towne Planning Board. It's September 28th, 2022. Statement of adequate notice, the legal notice required in accordance with this Open Public Meetings Act has been satisfied, and a statement certifying same will be executed. If you'll join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of United States of America and to the republic which stands, nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Sonia, on the roll call?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The nun?
Here.
Dorothy?
Here.
In order.
Here.
It's Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Bye.
Here.
Ms. Murphy.
Here.
Mr. Quillen?
He did say he couldn't join as a panelist.
Mr. Flowers?
Here.
Mr. Benoit?
Here. Thank you.
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Mr. Slate? Mr. Fischinger?
Here.
And I, Sonia Santiago, here.
Thank you, Sonia. For those of you just, you've probably already discussed this, but Mr. Alessa will take over once he arrives. It's a lot easier to do that from a chair there. But we can get started. Our first public hearing, well, our special meeting this night is for a public hearing for the Red Bull Arena. Sonia, would you please read the application?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This is a continuation. This is PBO 622 Red Bull Arena Inc. for site plan, block 9101, lot four and five, 101-103 Columbia Road in the OL5 PUD Zone. This is a continuation from the August 15th and September 12th of 2022 public hearings. Applicant proposes to construct New York Red Bull's arena training facility for professionals, academy, and youth sports team to include outdoor fields, building used for administrative and business office, gymnasiums, and field houses, athletic training and fitness, and fitness classrooms, dormitories, and indoor field, food server operation, physical therapy, and ancillary facilities related to the athletic training.
Thank you very much. Before we proceed, just for the benefit of everyone in the room, the policy of the planning board now is to end public hearings at 10 o'clock in the evening. So that gives us almost three hours. So, Mr. Warner, if you want to head this up?
Mr. Chairman, we've been carried without further notice to this evening. The notice was proper. Board has jurisdiction to hear and decide the case. We have a quorum, so it's probably appropriate to turn it over to applicant's counsel, Mr. Gracioppi.
Mr. Chairman, can I just make a comment real quick?
Yes.
It's Mark George. I just want to remind the board and the applicants to please speak into the mics during tonight's meeting. Watching the recording from the meeting I missed last a few weeks ago, it was hard to hear. So in keeping faith to the people who are joining us remotely and will be watching the rerun online, please speak into the mic as best as you can for everyone, including the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Giraffi. Thank you for reminding everyone of that. I would also like to point out that by the time the planner usually speaks, it's the end of the application and they begin to go over all the positive and negative criteria. And it can be a little overwhelming at that time to try and keep up with all of the positive, negative criteria in that course of time. I would ask the applicant to make a concerted effort during the process of the testimonies to highlight the positive and negative criteria so that when it's repeated at the end, we already have a familiarity and association of that criteria with previous testimonies. So I would appreciate if you could include that in your testimonies. Okay, Mr. Gracioppi?
Okay. Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Warner. Mr. Barrington, if you would just pull up the order of witnesses so that the public knows what to expect tonight. We've, we've already heard, you can't see it on here, if you go up a little, already heard from Mark de Grand Prix, the president, and Connor Laid, senior manager of alumni and player relations. We already heard from John Amarosa. Mr. Barrington testified at the last meeting. He did some follow-up with the FAA, so we're going to ask him about that to start off. Mr. Zeller was going to follow, must go lighting, but he has a family emergency, so we're going to have to rejigger the list a little bit. We will hear from then John again, John Amarosa, because the board and the public asked some questions about typical weekly schedules in the, in the life of a Red Bull facility. So John's going to testify briefly about that distinct aspect. Then Mr. Keller will talk about traffic. Kristen Byrd is not here. She's in Texas, so we'll stop that traffic. We don't think we'd get to Kristen anyway. And the last two would be Gerto Aquino, who's our landscape architect, and then Eric Keller to finish up with the planning that the chairman just mentioned. So with that said, I'll turn it over to Mr. Barrington and ask him to describe his conversations with the FAA.
And if I just may, real briefly, I note that Mr. Barrington may have completed his direct testimony already, but he has the additional information, Mr. Chairman. Certainly within your discretion, I recommend that he finishes direct examination, and then the board members, board professionals, members of the public can question him on the entirety of his engineering testimony, if that's okay with you, Mr. Chairman. Hearing no objection from the chair? I might be hijacking this meeting now.
I mute myself. I'm not there. Yes.
Okay. And you remain under oath and your license remains a good standing, correct, Mr. Barrington?
Yes.
I'll turn it over to your counsel. Thank you.
And, and Mr. Barrington, I know you spent a lot of time with, speaking with the FAA and for some period of time as well. So can you please describe to the board what you're learning?
Yes. So we filed in June of this year an application for obstructions associated with the athletic light poles, the indoor soccer field, and the primary building. The location of our site is such that any, any type of construction, whether it be a 10-foot building, a 20-foot building, would require filing with the FAA. So we made that filing in June. We had heard back informally from the FAA in August, and in September, after the last hearing where we heard back formally from the FAA, they finished their initial review of the application, and they are moving into a phase where they're soliciting input from the aviation, the aviation community. We did reach out to the FAA. We spoke with David Maddox from the FAA, who's in charge of the, the technical evaluations. He did inform us that more than likely, there would be some level of marking or marking and lighting associated with the athletic poles and the buildings. He also did mention that the FAA is, is aware that there are adjacent communities. They do not expect that every light pole, every building corner would require marking or lighting, but they would expect that there would be some type of marking or lighting required for anything on the site. They would be looking at adjacent features such as the water tower, the adjacent townhomes, the adjacent trees, to inform their judgment of what type of lights or marking would be needed for the poles and the buildings on the site.
Mr. Barrington, would, would you say that the, your discussions with the FAA is whether or not we had light poles, meaning if they, if there was somebody to build the, permit it before we were even thought of, the permitted approvals, would they need lights as well based on your conversations with the FAA?
More than likely. Any type of development, any type of structure would require forms to be filed with the FAA for them to determine the appropriate marking and lighting. The marking and lighting is determined by the FFA. So they're allowed to, they are allowed, like I said, to look at where the trees are, if there's any other obstructions to determine what's appropriate. It's not a one-size-fits-all scenario. So that, that is why they will look and they will make a very site-specific determination.
And, and, and might it even be the case that even if we build nothing or no developer built anything, they might require a light, for example, on the water tower?
It's possible that they come back and require something for the water tower because it is on our property at this point.
I have no further questions. Mr. Chairman, I, I think we're now at the point where we can have a board member questioning, board professional questioning, and ultimately, public questioning of Mr. Barrington as to the entirety of his direct testimony, that which he provided at the last meeting, as well as the additional information and testimony he provided just now. So with your permission, Mr. Chairman, should we go to board members first?
Yes, please. Let's do that. Any board members?
Mr. Chairman, this is Linda Murphy. I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Murphy.
This is relevant to the FAA discussion that you just shared. Prior to your development plan or redevelopment plan, whichever is the right terminology, there were office buildings on that site as well. I think the water tower was in existence then too. And did that also require FAA marking and lighting? And if so, are those grandfathered, carried over? Or how does that, how does that work?
I can't speak to how the FAA enforces things that haven't filed. I think that's also probably subject to their determination, who they want to chase after and who they don't. I can tell you in our research, we did see that Honeywell, there was one application they filed for a small antenna on the, on the, on the corner of a building. They did file for that. They did get approval for it. I can also tell you that a crane was used for the installation of the eastern townhomes. Again, that was filed for, and they did get approval for that. So it's tough to say how far the FAA will go. I can tell you that when I spoke to them, that he did specifically tell me, I am aware you have a very large water tower on your property. So that will be considered in their determination.
Right. It's my observation that your buildings are probably not as high as the office buildings were at the time. So it's, it seems strange that it's treated like it's a new, I'm, I'm commenting on the federal government. I don't know why you even bother doing that, but.
Anything exceeds the surface. So these are all imaginary surfaces based on where the airport is. The letter we received, our largest athletic light pole is 90 feet high. We received a letter saying we exceeded the surface by 100 feet on a 90-foot pole. So there, it's, it's more to do with the topography of the site, the site being on a hill relative to where the airport is located.
All right. Thank you so much.
I have a question. Did you get any indication from them as to the timing? I mean, how long is it going to be before they issue their recommendations?
It's a one-month period for them to solicit input from the aviation community. So they'll be generally looking for input of, does this somehow affect air traffic or not? It's really specific to the aviation community. This doesn't supersede the zoning process, the planning process. So I would say probably after that period, but there's really, I would say, a very, very low probability that we, we don't get that approved. There really is no issue with it. It's standard. They do have to solicit input from the aviation community.
Right. The question is, what is the recommendation going to be? Flashing lights? How high? Where? How many? Those are the questions that are out there.
That's what the FAA will determine. More than likely, it will be at least one light on top. Conservatively, there would be a red light at night and a, and a white light during the day. The number of which ones they determine are appropriate to light would be up to the FAA's determination. They also look at other things in terms of birds, impact of lights to birds. They look at how lights would affect residential communities as well. So they really are looking at the entirety of where these features are and, and how does everything fit together?
And the FAA input is the only input they solicit?
The FAA solicits input from the aviation community.
Okay. That's it?
It's, they're looking for aviation-related comments, correct?
Just clarifying.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other board members? No. I, I have a quick question on that regard. Is it, is this a type of application where based upon regulations, you make recommendations and they say yes or no? Or you just show them a site plan with information and they tell you from scratch?
More the latter. The, the guidelines are, are general in nature, but the FAA is allowed to prescribe certain remedies based on what they, what they believe the type of air traffic is, how close it is to, to the airport. So it, it's more the latter, like you said. We can recommend, but they, they're doing their own independent study based on the site plan that we submitted, the buildings where they are, the, the poles where they are.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, for the record, I believe we have board member Quillen with us. And so I just want that to be on the record if it's not already. And if a board member Quillen missed any portion of the testimony, and it wouldn't have been that much if any, but certainly board member Quillen can re-watch that portion or, or read the transcript for that portion and qualify himself to the extent required. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. I did miss about 10 minutes, between 10 and 15 minutes. I'm not sure what happened there, so I apologize for the inconvenience to everyone for my joining late, and I'll try to resist asking too many questions. But I do have a couple of questions if, if the chair will allow me.
Go right ahead, George.
And so when you refer to the aviation community, could you be a little more specific about what that is?
The FAA provides public notice, soliciting comments from the aviation community. So if you are flying into or out of Morristown Airport, if you have a, a business at the airport, if you're somehow doing something aviation-related to the airport, then they would be looking for any type of comment on what you, how you think that might affect you. This one is, it's a little strange. We're not in the approach to the airport. We're not in the approach. We're not in a transition surface. So I, it is standard for them to ask for input, but you would have to prove somehow that you had some type of unique use related to coming into or out of the airport that was affected.
So there is no runway that, there's no runway approach that goes over the property?
No.
There's a runway approach farther to the east that goes, say, over Fairleigh Dickinson University. I know that because I've.
Closer to the golf course. Yes. As you move towards the golf course, that would be closer to where the approach is.
And in terms of the, the application and what we, what this board is being asked to approve, would, would our approval, in what manner could our approval be conditioned upon? And I guess this is perhaps a question for, for the attorney as well. To what extension could our, to what extent could our approval be conditioned on what the FAA requires? I mean, it's conceivable, at least, at least to me. Maybe this is pretty far-fetched, but if the FAA required something that we found really objectionable, it would be unfortunate if we had approved your application and we found out about this afterwards.
I think I've stated conservatively that a red light during night and a blinking white light during the day would be a conservative estimate on four, five, or six locations. So they've indicated informally that they do, would not plan to light every building corner, every light pole. But it is, I think it's fairly conservative to say there will be lighting at several locations to, to define the, the project, the project site.
And it's the expectation of the applicant that, that this application would be completed and we would approve or deny the, the application prior to the applicant hearing back from the FAA, conceivably?
If I may answer, you know, it's, it's not unlike other state or federal approvals. Your, your approval would be subject to compliance with FAA. FAA is, you know, federal, so they trump. And just like, you know, DEP, your, your resolution of approval, if it was given, would require that we comply with all DEP requirements. So it would be no different in that regard. We, we must comply. We have to comply, and federal law supersedes state law. Mr. Warner, I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that, but.
Only the fact is, as I, as the testimony that you may have heard just earlier was that it sounds as if the decision of the FAA may come after a decision of this board. And if this board is an approval, it would be a condition of approval. You've heard what is the conservative estimate of the expert, or the potential, maybe worst-case scenario, or, or at least conservative case scenario. And that should be the guidance for the board to make a determination. You may have also heard testimony that there may be the same or similar requirements of any other development on this site, or even possibly no development on that site. You may have heard that testimony. So that may all weigh into your determination. And certainly, this is a developable site as, has already been approved for development by this board. So I think that's important to consider as well.
I believe also, yeah, Mr. Warner, this is, this is, I believe also that if there's an, if there's an occasion where something's really offensive, one item could come back to our board if necessary. But yeah, we, we tend to, to condition the approvals on federal and state approvals, and that generally hasn't been much of a problem.
It's done all the time, literally. Yes.
Right, right. Any other board members with, I'm sorry, Mr. Quillen, are you finished?
Yeah, Matt. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Warner, we, we're not just answering questions on this FAA application. This is part of a broader testimony from last meeting as well, right?
Correct. All of Mr. Barrington's engineering testimony that he's provided thus far in this, in this hearing.
Right. Thank you. So board members, and I apologize, I missed the last meeting, but board members, any other questions of Mr. Barrington for all of this testimony?
I have a few questions.
For the record, I apologize, board member Van Order, but I've been asked that Mr. Aless, to let everyone know, Mr. Alessa is here. He is chairing the meeting again, Mr. Benoit. I don't want to get in the middle, but hopefully you'll cede power to Mr. Alessa without dispute. And the, and so Mr. Alessa will be chairing the meeting. And of course, as I mentioned with board member Quillen, as, as our chairman as well, having missed a portion thereof, certainly will no doubt qualify himself to vote when the voting time comes. So, but back to, to you, Mr. Chairman Alessa. Chairman Benoit, with your permission, I'll take over the meeting.
I'm, I'm more than happy. I didn't know that you arrived, so I'm happy to know you arrived. And please proceed. I will sit back and, and I, like, I'm not the chair. That's your job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I hope to make you proud.
You always do.
Okay, we're going to move over to Mr. Van Order.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to express, Mr. Barrington, that I was, it was, your testimony was very helpful to me and very comprehensive, very detailed, very organized, and I really appreciated that. I wrote down as many notes as I could, but likely as not, there are a couple of things I missed. So it would, it would, if I can indulge you, just to review a few things for me. One of the questions I guess I had is in regards to the Honeywell's responsibility for the groundwater monitoring and, and potentially management. And I'm just wondering if it's too soon in the process for the applicant to know what is that condition? And, you know, what concerns might there be around potential past pesticide contamination?
The groundwater concerns at the site aren't related to pesticides. They do have in place what's called a CEA right now on the site, which is almost the equivalent of a deed notice just for groundwater. That, that, that CEA goes through, I guess it would be the, the southern end of the site. They currently are actively pumping out groundwater and remediating it.
And Mr. Barrington, CEA means that you cannot use groundwater for certain purposes?
You can't drink it, but in, in this case, the groundwater is, it's 60-plus feet underground. So it would be unsuitable for well water for drinking. They are actively pumping. They do reports on a two-year basis. Based on the, the last report data that we saw, they're going to have to continue their pumping and their remediation. The CEA will, will remain in place in perpetuity until the groundwater is under, meets the DEP's impact to groundwater standards.
Is it safe to say that this is not that relevant to you because you're not going to be using any of that water?
It isn't. It's only relevant to us in that we have to make sure Honeywell has access to the site for the groundwater monitoring they're doing.
Okay.
It doesn't affect where we can build, how we can build, what we can build.
Got it.
If we touch a well, we just have to make sure we move it, and we move it to a place that they, they believe is acceptable for what they're doing.
But Mr. Barrington, doesn't affect safety, health, or welfare in any, in any way?
No.
This condition?
No.
That, that's the crux of the question. Thank you so much. Just another, possibly two quick questions. You noted when you were describing the need for a steep slope waiver, that those steep slopes are mainly kind of man-made from recent activity. And I just wanted to confirm that that was the case, just that my understanding of that was correct.
Generally, it's two things. I mean, one, it's, it's man-made. The, the site has been demolished. So right now, there are some, there's some hills, there's some piles that are, aren't really natural. We'll be disturbing those. But the bulk of it really is the, the landscaping that we're doing on the, you can look at the image, the, the western side of the slope. The blue areas really.
Can you, do you know what the plan you're looking at?
This is the environmental constraints plan.
That was A. Well, I know it was A. Eight times. Thank you. From a trusted source, I think we're up, that was A5.
So blue are the areas that, that are the steep, steep slopes. You can see within the core of the site, there's some little strips here and there. Those are planned to be disturbed, basically to level out the site. But the bulk of it is really near those, the western townhomes adjacent to Lee Drive where we're re-landscaping that hill. That's the bulk of the disturbance.
Thank you. My last, well, really, I guess I said only one more, but maybe too quick. You probably said this and, or maybe it's coming later regarding parking and EV charging stations. Is that a discussion coming up at a later time?
We do. So every parking lot has EV spaces that meet the requirements of the ordinance.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. And you, at the end, and I, I think I was losing focus a little bit at the end, and I was having a hard time seeing your screen, but you talked about these three phases that you're going to be developing this project in. And, and I understood the first phase to be a two-year period, and then I kind of lost track of, of the phasing. And, and I just was wondering if you could maybe really quickly, you know, I don't want you to go into too much detail, but just, you know, like as a percentage of the total build, you know, what is phase one, it's period, what is phase two, it's period, and what's the final phase three?
And Mr. Barrington, I think you're referring now to A10, which is the construction phasing.
Yes. Thank you. So the phase one is almost the entirety of the site. There's some disturbance for the entire site within phase one. Phase one includes all the playing fields except for Field Nine, which is the, the one on the opposite side of Stockton. Phase two construction is essentially minor building construction for the indoor. Phase two construction is essentially minor building construction for the indoor field and for the dormitory building.
And what time would that happen? If, if the first one is a two-year period, then it, you would.
We're saying starting roughly twenty twenty-six. So the, the, the goal is to have the fields completed, the main building, so that the, the site can be occupied. And at that point, we would look to, to begin, begin construction on the phase two buildings. Um, phase three is essentially two things. It's the, the women's pro wing building. Um, and it's also the Field Nine field and parking lot. Just noting for everybody though, that the Field Nine area, um, there is some, some grading work that would be done, um, within phase one in terms of balancing fills on the site, um, and some, a little bit of drainage work.
Thank you very much. That, those are my questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Uh, I apologize, I was a few minutes late. At the last hearing, uh, counselor, we asked that your witness, since I think he completed his testimony, and I'm not sure whether he gave us a five-minute summary.
No, we, we did not give a five-minute summary.
Okay.
We can.
We'd like to get that five-minute summary just so that we could refresh everyone as to exactly, because we are done with his testimony, I believe, and it's just, so the board has asked their questions?
Yes.
So.
We haven't asked questions. No, I was the first one, other than.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you were going through the board's questioning of the, of the, uh, of Mr. Barrett. That's not the case.
We haven't finished.
We are, right now.
Okay.
We haven't finished.
The stand order started. Nobody else has asked any question.
I asked.
On the FAA.
So, so let's do this. Let's, let's get that five-minute recap so that we don't ask any redundant questions that you've already testified to. And then we'll finish the questioning of the board. And I'd like to move it as quickly as we can, because I think that the people that have been waiting since the last meeting haven't got an opportunity to ask questions. And I'd like to get started maybe with asking the questions of the FAA, because that seems like.
Agreed.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, real brief, without going through the slides again, uh, we, we.
Maybe you could just start with the overall. So this way, while you're giving us, we could at least see the overall site plan. That's, that was the one you had up before. Phases one, two, three, four, five. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
We'll stay here. So we started really talking about some of the approvals that we had. We mentioned that we had obtained county site plan approval. We had filed for soil erosion approval. FAA approval is pending. Uh, we talked a little bit about the existing conditions on the site, really looking at where are the property lines for this site. We explained those. Lot four and five is fairly expansive. Uh, the, the property includes Stockton, includes Prescott. All of those things are on the property. Uh, we talked about the steep slopes and that we are requesting a waiver for steep slope disturbance. Um, additionally, we did talk about some of the existing features in terms of the water tower is to remain right now. The guard booth that's right on Stockton, the entrance, we are planning to demolish that. We talked a little bit about the contamination and what our responsibilities are in terms of, uh, we will be taking over the soil capping as needed for the site with, there's, there's two areas on the site, um, that we would be taking over. Honeywell maintains responsibility for the groundwater issues on the site. We moved into a little bit of a discussion on site planning and zoning. The, what we thought were the key issues there was the, the fields, the buildings, the design in and of itself has really been compressed into the site. We've, we've tried to maximize the size of buffers on the eastern side, buffers on the western side. Um, we've designed the parking in a manner that we think it's, it's less intrusive to, to preventing people from traveling through the site. We did talk about technical variances. Um, so we talked briefly about the, near the primary building, the chiller and the gen set are, fall within the side yard setback next to the golf course. We talked about fencing around the chiller and the gen set possibly requiring a technical variance as well. Uh, we noted that these, these, uh, the chiller and the gen set are roughly four hundred feet from the, the Aldrich Court properties, the, the eastern townhomes. We talked about on the other side, either grounds and operations building, we also have another generator and chill set that also requires a technical variance. Um, these, 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 uh, these two structures are adjacent to the commercial, the self-storage property. Um, they're also roughly three hundred ninety feet from the residential that's on the other side of the self-storage building. The last technical variance we touched on was the, the guardhouse on the, uh, service drive. Right now there is a guardhouse roughly in this area, um, tucked right next to the self-storage building. That's within both the front yard and the side yard. Um, we talked a little bit about the internal circulation. Mr. Keller will provide some more information on that. We talked about the, the parking facilities. Um, we talked about how we had gone out to the existing parking facility. We had taken measurements. We had counted parking stalls. We had determined how people are using that site. And we had extrapolated it really to our site so that we make sure as the, as the program grows to bring on the, the women's teams, the women's academy, that the parking matches our need. We talked about loading. We've got really those two primary loading areas. We've got the underground loading, um, in the main building that has a, a drive off of Prescott leading to an underground loading dock that facilitates trash removal, recycling, uh, loading. We talked about how the, the typical vehicle we expect there is roughly thirty feet. We talked about the second loading area really being in the grounds area. There's no dock in this area, but there is a, another dumpster out there. So really this would facilitate things on the, the northern side of the site for the field house. And certain sports needs would have trash removal in that area. Talked about the light poles being primarily setback. We added two hundred and thirty-six feet to the western townhomes, three hundred and eighty-seven feet to the eastern townhomes. The, the setbacks for the light poles far exceed the, uh, what's in the zoning. Additionally, we talked about some of the things that we had done to incorporate into the site plan. We talked about a new walkway along Stockton. Some traffic improvements along Prescott, including crosswalks and striping. Paving existing trails that are currently stone dust to make them a little more accessible. The, uh, erosion, repairing their erosion on the west residential hill. Um, repairing the drainage system in the northern area. Right now there is a pond close to Columbia that isn't supposed to be a pond, so we're fixing that. Buffers, we've done, we, we've set back the buildings to try and increase the buffers on the eastern side and on the western side. Turn radius. We've structured most of these driveways to try to prevent people from turning into the heart of the site. Um, so the, the parking areas, if you're looking at the main drive here, this driveway is really designed to put people back out to Columbia Road. So we've tightened the radius as much as we can there. Grading and drainage, we talked about really that, the, the story for grading and drainage is, this is the last piece of really a master redevelopment. The detention basins on site were designed for non-residential development for the site. The base, both basins, the north pond and the south pond were improved, um, as, as part of the, the previous GDP, as part of the, the residential development. Pipes were put into the south pond, forty-two inch, thirty-six inches, leading from the south pond into the heart of Lot Five. There's really no need to do any extra piping there in those areas. We talked about the, how our, our site has less impervious compared to the, what was contemplated in the original GDP, what was submitted with the previous commercial site plan. We have less flow going into those basins as a result. Uh, we talked about some modifications we made to both detention basins to try to even, slow down even further, those small level storms. Utilities, we talked about the utilities. The site will be served by a common sanitary pump station that's located on the western residential property, um, similar to the drainage. That pump station was designed for flows that far exceed what we're looking to pump into there. Um, additionally, the, the sanitary sewer pipe was installed from that pump station leading into this site. So there really is not a lot of piping work that needs to be done, um, off of our property to gain access to that. Um, we've, we've laid out a potential substation location for JC P and L. We've been coordinating with Verizon on the communications, PSE and G on the gas. We've received a comment letter from the MUA on the water connections, which they've approved. We did note the one thing with the water connections was that the MUA is requesting what's called hot boxes. Basically, they like the meters and pressure reducing valves above ground in a box that will be visible. Um, we did mention we will look to screen those, um, but they, that is something that's not on the drawing right now. Uh, the last thing we talked about was really the phasing and the three phases. Phase one is the majority of construction on the site. Phase two is adding two buildings. Um, once the site is basically stabilized. And, and phase three is really an expansion of the program that isn't set to start until phases one and two are, are complete.
And you also mentioned, Mr. Barrington, that we already have county approval, correct?
We do, correct.
Thank you, Mr. Barrington. Thank, appreciate you giving us that update. Just one quick comment. You had testified, I think, earlier that there is a, um, an abundance of space that you're not going to be using? And I think maybe you could just point to it for everybody's edification.
Yes. The front portion of Lot Four, I mean, the, the site has two properties. There's Lot Four and Lot Five. Lot Four is, try and zoom out. Yeah, I do. Okay. So basically, the brown area is the extent of Lot Four and Lot Five. Um, the portion, this is the portion of Lot Four that really isn't going to be used. And development for, on Lot Four was, was limited really to the existing footprint. Um, in fact, we, we built even where the existing parking lot is, we built about ten feet further inland of where that is to avoid the trees in that area. Lot Five, other than that Field Nine area, the remainder of Lot Five is unused. Um, the basin, everything, the, the small wedge here between the two sets of townhomes is undeveloped. Uh, the other two areas that are undeveloped, there is a strip of land next to the golf course on the other side of Prescott that the water tower is in, between the Prescott Road and the golf course, all of that remains undeveloped. And then the last piece that's really undeveloped is, um, between the service road and the, the PUD boundary. Service road being here, everything pretty much on the other side is undisturbed. With the exception of, we did add some, uh, plant, some trees and bushes uh, within that area to try to increase the, uh, the thickness of the buffer in those areas.
So the, Mr. Barrington, the site is about eighty-one acres, all told, and, and we're using to develop how much approximately?
Let me just confirm the number.
I'm just asking for, you know.
Forty-five to fifty acres, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. We're gonna open back up to board questions. Mr. Flowers?
No questions.
Chief Nun?
No.
Mayor Jarkey? Ms. Wilson?
Yes, I have a few questions. Um, so you said that the county planning board had approved this application. Can you specify what it is that they have approved?
We were required to file a major site plan with the county because of, uh, we are close to, we're, we have, uh, frontage on Columbia Road. Um, so they, they reviewed the plans. The submission was made, I believe, the last week or first week in August was made. Um, they reviewed and, and approved it with no comments.
So they review the site plan as opposed to the general development plan?
They reviewed the entire site plan package, all hundred and ten sheets, the site plan packages. They reviewed the stormwater management report. And they refu- reviewed the, uh, traffic report as well.
Did their approval have anything to do with Park Avenue and Prescott?
There were no conditions stipulated on us at all, no comments made, nothing for us to address in terms of off-site improvements.
So if that comes up later, that would be a separate approval by them?
We, we have the county approval for this project. County has no further jurisdiction. They gave us an approval for this project that you're seeing. We need no further approvals from the county to build this project.
Okay, just clarifying what it was that they approved.
Yeah, and, and I think, um, you should have, uh, the county provides you, I think, with that approval, and of course, we will provide it as well. But I think Mr. Slate has the approvals on you. You may have the approval as well.
Yeah, the, the report is here. I didn't know any specific conditions, but I did note that they, um, a- and the, uh, traffic testimony, we'll get into this a little bit, there, there were some, uh, timing adjustments, I believe, to the signals because of the reduction in traffic that's anticipated to come from the system.
Right, that's one of the things, I'm curious if they, if they addressed that.
I did not see that, uh, you know, in the report, but that is something that, you know, we've had discussions with them.
So it could be ongoing.
Uh, discussed as part of the traffic testimony.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so on the remediation, uh, we had soil and water. So the soil is, um, is the Red Bull's responsibility to deal with the ongoing remediation there, correct? Whereas the water, um, contamination is Honeywell's responsibility? Is that correct?
Yes, but I will, I'm not sure how you're using the term remediation, so I'll, I'll clarify that to be, make sure we're, we're clear. Um, basically, the site is capped right now. Um, the only open remediation item on this site is the engineering cap that would go on the, what's called the Schmoo three area, which was deferred to the final development. So that's technically the only thing that's open. However, as we come into this and, and redevelop, we will have to redo the cap in the Field Nine area. So yes, uh, we are taking it over, but for the most part, it's, it's already done.
Okay, so except for that cap that you just referenced, and is that the same cap that's under Field Nine?
Field Nine has a cap right now that is six inches of soil, so that, that type of cap would not be suitable, the same type of cap that you would need for an athletic playing field. So the athletic playing field cap would be a little more thicker, recognizing that there's people using it. The cap that's out there right now does not anticipate that people are out there using it as recreation. It's really just dirt to keep people.
So cap means the layer of soil that's a, what does a cap mean exactly?
It's called an engineering control or a cap, um, and you, basically depends on your, the type of use you have. Based on the use you have, based on the type of contamination is there, the DEP provides requirements for what the cap needs to be. So it, it's really going off of what the DEP standards are depending on the situation.
But, Mr. Barrington, a cap could mean asphalt, it could mean dirt, it could mean.
It could. There's different types of caps, absolutely. In some cases.
So are there different types of caps already existent on the site?
There's only one cap on the site right now, and it's purely in the Deildren area, which I will pull up. Show you where it is. Okay, if you can see here, there is a red outline.
Plan are you referring to?
Is it A five? Is that what?
Is that the colorized version? This is A five, colorized version, okay.
The grading plan?
That's, that's the colorized version of existing conditions. What, what, what was it?
This is the constraints plan.
Constraints plan, okay, that's, uh,
that's A five.
Okay, we got it.
Do you mind about the constraints plan?
Yes.
So can, so can you clarify what you're saying here?
There's one cap on the site today. It's for this area, which is the dirtiest pesticides. Okay, this cap was installed when the residential, the eastern residential was constructed. The worst pesticides that were located underneath these townhomes were taken, they were piled here. Then the contractor put a cap there. In this case, the cap was six inches of topsoil on top of it. That's what's the cap. That's the only cap on the property right now.
Okay, and that met the DEP requirements?
It did, correct.
Okay, thank you. So then on the water, that's a separate topic, the, the groundwater contamination. It's my understanding that, or can you explain how, how the remediation of that contamination works? It's wells. It's a series of wells, correct?
Yes, but the series of wells that are on our site are really for just measuring and monitoring the, the contaminants. Um, so there's, there's several wells on our property that are, are used that Honeywell will need to continually use to monitor. They are pumping. They do have a location where they're pumping from the groundwater to, to remove, remove contaminants, but it's really the, it's, this is something that will dissipate over time.
Oh, it will?
Yeah.
So they pump the water, how are the contaminants removed?
They're removed when they take the water out, so.
When they take the water out of the ground?
Yes.
Okay, and then that water goes where?
It gets disposed of in accordance with state requirements. It's not going in, no, it's not going into the drain. It's taken off in a tank and a truck and, and disposed of at a disposal facility.
But, Mr. Barrington, most of the, for lack of a better word, remediation is done by natural attenuation here, or no?
Correct, over time, the levels will dissipate, whether it takes two years, or 10 years, or 20 years. I know Honeywell is hopeful that it's sooner rather than later, but they're on the hook for this in perpetuity. If it takes 200 years, they would have to be out there for 200 years.
So they're generally measuring, monitoring, and just essentially waiting for natural attenuation to dissipate dissipate any contaminants?
Generally, yes.
And they work with the EPA to monitor this, correct?
They have, so the state of New Jersey has a licensed site remediation professional program right now. So all that work is conducted under the guidance of a licensed site remediation professional. They're licensed by the state in the same way I'm licensed as a professional engineer. The LSRP reports their findings to the DEP, who is entitled to review them, audit them. I mean, if they have any questions, they will review and prove. So for example, Honeywell is currently seeking an extension to continue doing the monitoring work. They have to apply to DEP for them to approve that, which they will. So it's, the oversight is by an LSRP, but their DEP does have a role in making sure that the LSRP is doing what they're supposed to do.
Okay, good. All right, so now, a few questions about your stormwater management report. One question, this might be for Mr. Slate. The way I read this report is that the stormwater management plan was, it was basically created for 2015 approval, right? I mean, for a bigger, more project that would generate more runoff. So the current proposal generates less runoff. But the question I have is that there was a, locally, we had a different stormwater ordinance in play in 2015 compared to now. So my question is, what is the relationship between the current ordinance and the ordinance in place in 2015 as it pertains to the stormwater management report?
I'll let Mr. Barrington answer that question.
Thank you.
So it's both. So essentially, the 2015 flows had a flow that's allowed to be discharged from those detention basins. Our calculations for our proposed condition, our fields, our building, was all done in accordance with the rules from your current ordinance.
From the 2021?
Yes. So we're creating, our proposed condition is based off of the methodology, the requirements, the standards within your 2021, within your current ordinance. And then compared to make sure that they're not violating those standards that were set set forth back in 2015.
Okay, good. I'm glad to know that you did reconcile it with the 2021 ordinance. It almost felt to me like a legal question, but I'm glad to know that you did that. Thank you. On the aerators that are in the ponds, can you explain how that works? Who's responsible for maintaining those?
The Columbia Park Owners Association. So that association is part non-residential, the condos on the west side and on the east side are also partners within the association. That's not the only thing. I mean, the association does the aerators, they have responsibility for Prescott, Stockton Road, they have responsibilities for the sanitary pump station, so there are various common elements.
It appeared to me that the aerator was not working properly when I walked by one time, and I, it's not clear to me who, like, if you're a resident there and you see it not working, what do you do? Who do you?
Call the property manager.
Call the property manager? Let's see here. Can you talk a little bit about, I believe you did reference at your testimony on September 12th, the sprinkler systems, the irrigation, I guess, or how you water the fields? Did you talk about that? I had notes about that.
I think I mentioned that we, there would be a sprinkler system for this. So there'll be a sprinkler system for the athletic fields, and there'll be a sprinkler system separately for some of the landscaped areas as well. The sprinkler system for the athletic fields is, it's not a lot different than what you would have in a residential yard, it's just the heads are designed specifically to be in an athletic field. And they're designed to water the fields. I mean, the fields will be watered as needed.
Water that comes from what we call, what, the Southeast Morris County Utilities Authority?
That's correct. And what we did, we do have multiple water connections for, there will be potable water, which is for drinking, domestic, plus the sprinkler systems, and there'll be also separate connections for the fire system on site. So there will be multiple connections to the main on both Columbia and on Prescott.
Okay. And in regard to the water tower, what purpose does it serve now, and are you planning to keep it?
It doesn't serve any purpose right now. It was installed primarily, I think, to to increase fire flows for the Honeywell site. I believe that Red Bulls are still evaluating whether it has any practical use in terms of storing storing water, or if there's any type of function that can be found for it. But the purposes of this application, it's intended to stay.
And right now, there's, is it empty? There's nothing in it?
There's nothing in it, it's empty, yeah. That's correct.
Okay, can you explain a little more the variance for the chiller? What is that?
Yes.
Mr. Counselor, will your planner be discussing those variances?
Yes.
So maybe we could postpone that question for the planner?
Okay, that would be fine. And then you did bring up lighting also. I imagine we'll be talking about that in more depth.
I believe there's a lighting expert that's not available tonight.
There's a lighting expert who will talk about the lighting, the fixture, the illumination, the, and how the lights work, yes.
We have a very comprehensive presentation on the lighting from an expert.
Ms. Wilson and I are waiting with bated breath.
Yes.
We are. Did you say in the beginning that would be happening tonight, or would not be?
No, no, but he was expected to testify tonight for that family emergency prevention and some.
Okay, all right, that's all I have now, thank you.
Great, Mr. By.
No questions.
And I believe Ms. Murphy, Mr. Quillen, and Mr. Benoit already asked questions. Is that correct?
No further questions.
Perfect, then we're going to open up the floor to the public. So again, gonna ask you to please bear with us for one second, we have rules. So when you come up, state your name and your address clearly, and remember, these are questions for Mr. Barrett on his testimony, no comments, no opining on how you feel about that. When the application is completed by counselor, everyone will have an opportunity to give us your opinion and to testify how you feel about this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Patricia Collins, for Green Knolls Road. I would just like some further clarification. The submission to the FAA, that was based on 90-foot lights, right, AD and 90-foot lights? Now, my question is, if they come back and say that it's going to need a red light and a strobe light, then wouldn't it behoove us all to resubmit it using lower lights? Because it's, so it doesn't impact our quality of life?
We don't believe the height of the lights would matter in this case. Everything, as I mentioned before, everything is an obstruction. The, the townhomes on the eastern side are the same obstruction that our lights have.
When you mentioned though before, like, the water tower, maybe that had to be submitted for the lights, that never had a light on it, so.
It was never filed to the FAA.
It was never filed, okay, all right, thank you. And another clarification, though, and regarding the lights again, with the heights of the lights, shouldn't that all be, maybe I misconstrued something, shouldn't the height and the lights, et cetera, be all done and the FAA approval before the board votes on it? It almost sounds like the board could vote, and the FAA can give information.
We have to comply with the FAA, federal government, and federal law trumps, and it's not unlike any other law that we are required to comply with with respect to the project.
If the board were to grant approval, and the FAA wouldn't, then they would not have met that condition, and our approval would be mute.
But shouldn't the FAA have it stay first, so that we could all know where we stand as far as the lights go?
Applicants' counsel can answer as well, but if I can assist members of the public and the board, the applicant has the right to ask for the municipal approval first, subject to conditions of any other approvals, and it's not only commonly done, frankly, it's universally done.
So can we ask the board to hold off, though? In other words, would it be within our rights to ask to hold off making a judgment until, this is 100% clarified, because we don't want to be caught short?
Right, I understand.
You know, and get.
To answer your question, the legal answer is, the applicant has the right to ask the municipality, the board, to make a decision and have other approvals conditioned on that.
Wow, after the fact?
Correct.
So would the, just to clarify again, would be, we'd be in our rights to ask the board to hold off until everything is settled?
You have, at the end of the application, you'll have an opportunity to testify, and you can make that request during that testimony.
Oh, great, I can make that request at the end?
Yes.
Is that at the end of the entire hearing?
Entire hearing, not tonight, if, I mean, if we're blessed, we'll get through, maybe the traffic.
No, no, we're gonna get through.
At least to get started.
If you don't mind, I have one more question.
Sure.
Okay, all right, why did we never get the graphic renderings of what the lights would look like from our vantage point, the very first night of the meeting in the hotel? I asked.
Our lighting expert is going to be testifying.
But we need the graphic so we know what we look like. Will she be providing them?
Yes.
She'll be providing what, the graphic representation of what we will be seeing?
Yes.
So Counselor, we'll be getting that, and it'll be posted on the website for the public to see in advance of the hearing.
And that's for all of Green Knolls Road, not just the cul-de-sac, because there was one up there for the cul-de-sac.
We have, we have a comprehensive package of perspectives from all over the place. You'll take a look at them, I'm sure, and you'll tell us how deficient we are.
And will that be up on the website before we have our next meeting? So we can take a look?
Yes, we could put it on.
Because, you know, we were expecting lighting tonight, and it wasn't up there. There was nothing up there about the lighting, and we were expecting it tonight. So I'm just hoping that the package is up there, we can look at it, so we can see what we're going to be looking at.
What we, what we try to prevent doing, just so you know, we don't want to, we don't want to just put things out there without explanation. What you have a right for is to hear the expert, let him present the application, and then, as the chairman says, you have the right, not only to question that witness, but to go back and then make comments and testimony afterwards. What we don't want to do is put a lot of things on on the website and then confuse everybody without us at least explaining what they meant to be. I, for example, became a lighting expert as part of this project, when Mr. Deller explained to me what many of these things meant.
Right, because we know nothing, obviously, we're not lighting experts.
We've got a lot of people waiting online, are there any other questions?
I know, no, I just want to say, I need my time, please, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Larry Kessler, I'm at One Aldridge Court. First, I'd like you to clarify, you mentioned the ponds. There is a pond on Columbia that I believe is on the Bulls' property. It's full of algae, needs to be cleaned up, and I believe it is not the homeowner's responsibility.
That's correct, there is an area that we've committed to, we've added notes on the drawing that says that that area will be, will be fixed.
Right, because it needs work, it's overgrown. And just have one other question, on Stockton Drive, it seems like you do have buffering on one side of the street where you're going to have your main field house and everything, but on the other side of the street where Field Nine is, it's it's up against the street, there's no buffering. Why is that?
We've done a few things to try to minimize the impact on that side. There's, as you can see, there's there's slopes over here. If the fields were bigger or shifted, we would start to get into those slopes requiring retaining. There's a steep slope really on the pond side of the field that really prevents us from moving things over too much or making things larger. The field is all bet ready, been reduced in size from what would be ideal. But yeah, it is closer than the others, but again, we've, we've tried to move things around to maintain the the existing trees between Field Nine and the townhomes. Also, there's another tree stand in this area that we've, we've tried to really avoid to allow those mature trees to stay. So we believe we've done a pretty good job in avoiding the steep slopes, the mature trees on each side.
Right, but again, coming into the neighborhood and driving through, you'll be going down the street, on one side you have buffering and you see trees, on the other side, you're going to see this field. There's no buffer there, I mean, to maintain.
There is proposed landscaping there, which our landscape expert will testify to.
And if I could remind the members of the public, the procedure, and it's by law, so that's my job to remind, is that this is for questioning only, not for testifying, making comments which are not under oath. We want you to have the benefit of your comments counting when you are under oath during the public comment period. So if you, everyone can please do the best to try to direct the question as a question to the witness. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, Outford Demiro to Aldridge Court. Mr. Barrington, could you explain what your role is in the whole project? Seems like you're like a head coach or a quarterback, can you tell, you've been involved with the building placements, the lighting, the groundwater, can you just tell us what your role is in this project?
I'm the civil engineer for the project, so we're doing, we've taken, worked with the team to develop the site layout, we've done the grading and drainage design, the utility design, we'll also be designing the new caps for the site as well.
So you've had a wide-ranging role in the project?
Yes, that's fair.
Starting in no particular order, with the chillers and the generators, and I'm talking now, if you could put up the phase diagram, only because it's easiest to see.
For the record, ATEC.
Thank you. Now, the chillers and the generators related to the main building, where will they be?
Actually, I'm going to put up the site plan, which actually has them. Which should be A6, if I'm counting correctly. You can see that here, the little area that's bubbled here?
Right. Okay, so for us on Stockton, whose townhomes are right there, and that would be my home as well, the only thing buffering us from the chiller and the generator will be the plantings and maybe the parking lot, is that correct?
Fencing, parking lot, a large berm with a significant landscaping and buffer on it.
Okay. The generator, is that only an emergency generator?
Yes.
And will that be tested daily, weekly?
Much familiar, I would assume, weekly.
And, if I may, would the applicant stipulate to the testing, what do we normally do it? Jim?
Weekly is normal.
Yeah, no, no, but during the day, time hours?
Like the 10 to 4.
10 to 4.
Yes.
And how long does the testing last?
I would say, assume at least half hour, so. But I would also say that we've already agreed to comply with all the noise requirements required by the state during the day and at night.
Now, have you seen the environmental commission report of August 5?
Yes.
Okay, that said specifically that the chillers, the specs for those chillers and generators should be provided, and that the noise reports should be submitted. Has this been done yet?
No, I think we've said we would, we would comply with the state requirements for noise. We've also said that we would comply with any type of noise testing requirement at time of.
But were you aware that the township's own environmental commission said that these should be tested and reported?
It would be premature for us to have a full design to tell you the exact make and model of what. model of what chiller and what generator set it is at this point in time.
Okay, so at some point, is it fair to say that will have to be reconciled with Section 6 of the environmental report?
That's fair to say, correct.
Okay. Now, the chillers are for air conditioning?
Correct, but I, I will say you're, you're pushing the bounds of my civil engineering expertise, so.
Okay, I'm not asking for a lot of detail here. How long are those running each day in the summer?
I would defer that question to Ms. Kristin Bird when she gives her building testimony.
Okay. Do the chillers have to be located near the main building?
Yes, but again, I would encourage you to follow up with Kristin Bird when she gives her architectural testimony on the buildings.
Okay. How many square feet is the main building?
Roughly 136,000 gross square feet, however, that doesn't include the loading dock per the definition in the zoning ordinance.
The footprint of the building, the actual footprint, how many square feet is that?
I, I don't know the exact answer to what the square foot of that building is.
Would you say that the square footage of that footprint would approximate the square footage of one field?
No.
Would you say it would be less than two fields, looking at the picture?
I'm not sure where you're going with this. If you have a specific question
Would the footprint of the building fit within the space of two fields?
With the footprint of the building? Sure.
Okay. Do you know how many fields are going to be used at any given time?
Mr. Amarosa will provide testimony to that when he reviews his schedule.
Do you know?
Mr. DeMiro, I have to ask you to ask specific questions. It sounds like you're asking him to testify on grounds and matters that are not germane to his field.
Well, he's got a wide-ranging knowledge, with all due respect, and I would
He, he's the civil engineer, so the question should be
Your question would be better served to Mr. Amarosa, who has a detailed
And they have a number of witnesses that are gonna come up. You could ask these questions of the specific
This gentleman did say that he was involved in the placement of the building. Is that correct?
Generally, I was part of a multi-disciplinary team, correct.
And that's what I'm driving at. If two fields were eliminated, the building would not have to be put in front of our homes right there. Is that correct?
That's not a consideration for this application.
But you're not answering?
That is the answer.
There was discussion about, the homeowners could definitely see a computerized graphic of what this will look like from their homes. My, my porch, right, right on Stockton. And that's been verified, I think, by you or somebody here. My question is, how do I arrange for that?
Come here to the meetings, and you will see them, and then you'll have time to consider them. You'll have time to ask questions. You'll have time also to make your comment at the end of
What I'm asking, Mr. Rasiopis
Yes.
I've seen general renderings. I want to know if there
Perspectives.
Yeah, I, I want to know, is, is there a way that I can get a perspective standing on my front porch to Aldrich of what I'm going to be looking at?
We have general perspectives from various places in the community. That's what I can assure you you'll get.
That's not
There is not a perspective for every homeowner from every angle of every property on every street.
Are you aware that it was indicated to us we could obtain such a perspective?
I was unaware of any discussions related to that.
If we, if we wanted to obtain such a perspective, whom would we ask for that? Would it be the architect, the landscape architect, you, Mr. Rasiopis?
I would encourage you to wait and see the presentation on the renderings that were prepared to determine if, if they answer the questions that you have.
Okay. My, I think this is my last area. The construction sequencing. As you can see, we're going to be looking at construction for a, a number of years. That's fair to say, correct?
Correct.
Will the landscaping and the screening and the buffering be installed first to shield us from that?
Likely not. I mean, realistically, it's, the landscaping would have to have the final grading, rough grading, and enormous amount of site work done before you'd even be able to do that. Second of all, you'd have to look at what season and how things align, so probably not.
Well, if, if we're just talking about the homes facing Stockton, those homes, why couldn't you do the berm and the plantings to shield us during six years of construction?
The main piece of construction is two years. Within two years, that berm and the landscaping would be up and installed, so it's
Is that something you would stipulate?
Depends on the season. If, it would have to be, again, like I said, we can't
Within reason?
Put that down in January. Within reason, I think it would be done with the first phase.
Subject to, subject to a lot of conditions, given today's marketplace, force majeure, availability of materials. We, it's in our incentive to get this done quicker than anybody.
Mr., yeah, there's a good point here, that the Red Bulls have made a commitment for a lot of these plants are 10-foot, 20-foot tall.
Right.
These are not things that we can go down to the local landscape store and pick up, so.
I understand that. Can you think of an engineering reason why, at least for our homes here, you could not put in the berm and the plantings before all that construction's taking place? So an engineering reason why you couldn't do that?
Provided all the work in that area was done, and the seasons aligned with being able to plant, and we were able to get the types of trees and plants that we needed, it could be done.
Okay.
Thank you.
At that point, I'll make that argument when it's time for argument.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Don McHugh, Ten Aldrich. When you were giving your summation of the various items that have been discussed, what wasn't mentioned was your statement that the service road was going to be used exclusively during and for the construction, and also that the property would be fenced.
That's correct.
All right. The service road. Does that service road come down, and then are, do you include Pras, what's the name of it, one with the P?
Prescott.
Prescott. Are you including Prescott in the service road definition?
No, but I believe I also mentioned in my testimony that there would be limited work in Prescott for some of the utility work and some of the site grading, so.
That's the utility work. I'm talking about the actual construction
Correct.
Of all the buildings would not be coming out on Prescott.
Correct.
Okay. And the other thing is, what would the height be of the building directly across from Aldrich Court? I had asked that in the very beginning.
For the architect? You can ask the square foot. I can answer, assuming this doesn't go much further than this. The height of the building
You can identify the building by letter? I think they have letters.
Building A, which is the main building.
Right.
We'll say that we have a comprehensive, also, presentation from the architect who will go over
But it's a simple question.
49.7 feet is the height for the building as listed on the, on the site plan.
How many?
49.7.
All right, those, the buffering that you're gonna provide, how high is that gonna be?
I'll defer, at this point, we're drifting into much of the testimony for the, the landscape architect.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Keith Silverman, Three Delano Court. In your earlier testimony, you mentioned there's a fuel, fuel storage tank. What's that for?
Looking to do an above-ground storage tank within the grounds area so that, to make refueling for tractors and some of the grounds equipment a little bit easier.
Okay, so generators are, would be gas, natural gas?
The, yes, the generators are intended to be natural gas.
This might be getting to the architect area. When you select mechanical equipment, again, noise is a, a big concern. There are different kinds of chillers. Reciprocating chillers are pretty noisy, they're more modern chillers. Any equipment that goes on the roof, if it makes any noise, that'll project out beyond any buffering that you have. For example, air handlers that have belts that can squeak through the night because they need to be changed. There's the selection of equipment, which might be an architectural thing, that eliminates that type of equipment. Will those considerations be made?
I believe that we, we're looking to consider the quietest equipment we can find. I mean, noise affects the Red Bulls as much as it affects the neighbors. So I would encourage you also, if, if, to follow up with, with Ms. Bird.
I, I also believe that that's a question for the architect. That is not, that is not, sir, again, we're looking just for civil engineering questions.
Well, some of these do
Yeah, but you'll have an opportunity, again, everybody else online, you'll have an opportunity to question the landscape, the lighting, and the architect. This is the first witness.
Right.
And we're gonna try to get this done in less than 10 hearings.
All right. Well, it was a mechanical engineering question, and there was no mechanical engineer listed, so.
An architect would ask, answer that question, sir.
Well, this might fall to the architect. What's happening to the old Honeywell's huge double-ended substation that runs almost nothing?
We're seeking a new service from JCP&L. We're not
We don't own that.
We don't own that.
Oh, you don't? It won't? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anta Salvo, Four Delano Court. So, Four Delano Court. Most of these questions, I guess, are geared towards Prescott and the Players parking lot and the loading dock. Just for clarification, a question you, was the distance from when you enter Prescott to go underneath the building, you said that was 50 feet long? Was that my understanding? I don't remember the length of that.
Longer than 50 feet. There is a 50-foot distance from the road to where the gate crosses the, the driveway.
That's what, with the 50? Okay. So that was it? Okay. And then, so would you know, and I think these are all civil engineer questions, so from the intersection of Prescott and Stockton, the distance from that intersection to the entrance of the Players lot, and then, so do you know what that distance is?
I don't know offhand exactly, but looking at the drawing, I would guess it's maybe around 200 feet.
About 200.
Or so minus.
Okay. And then, so what would be, I guess I could do the mathematics, so the, the distance between the Players lot and the loading dock, it, from the diagram and the drawing, it looks like they're directly next to each other. So is that just a matter of a few feet, or is there more distance? Because I know you have the generator there as well, so I'm not sure the size of that.
I believe it's about 100 feet, roughly.
Between the Players parking lot and the loading dock entrance?
Correct, the two driveways is what you're asking, right?
About 100 feet, okay. Being that the loading dock has been designed off of Prescott, in your experience as a civil engineer, with the turning axis of trucks entering and exit, will the width of Prescott, which is below average, it's about 22 feet, 20 to 22 feet, depending on where you're standing and measuring, is that adequate space that it would not impede in traffic flow of cars coming out of a pretty, pretty busy intersection there for the, the residents?
The radius at, at Stockton and Prescott was designed for those right turns for, to accommodate trucks.
So if they come out of the loading dock area, they shouldn't cross over into a driver, say, coming from the west side up? They should, well, on the east side, coming up, I guess, is what they're doing. So it wouldn't interfere with them having to occupy the both sides of the road, is what I'm asking.
Coming into the loading dock.
Well, coming out of it. If there's a, I think it was on truck
They're coming out of the loading dock, they're crossing the, the lane to head out back towards the Stockton-Prescott intersection.
But they can't exclusive, they can't stay in one lane. They're gonna have to come and use up the whole space of Prescott, correct?
Not sure what you're saying. They've got to cross the lane to get in the opposite side of the street to head out.
Okay. All right. Maybe that's not, I'm not making myself clear on that. But they will
Coming into the loading dock.
The width of Prescott, that a truck entering, or entering, is going to have to make a wider angle turn, correct, to get into the loading? That's what I'm saying, like the space in the loading dock.
We've widened, so the, the loading dock width is 24 feet.
So that's what I'm asking.
The radius turning in is even larger, so we've opened up that radius so that a 30-foot truck who's coming into the loading dock is able to turn into
They appear in.
Service drive without going into the opposite lane of traffic.
Okay. And has there been, I don't, maybe this isn't an engineer question. It probably is not. So for traffic study, they would deal with any kind of signage or striping of the roads, et cetera?
Mr. Keller is gonna discuss the traffic impact statement that was done in the traffic moving on Stockton and Prescott.
Okay, and so, and this might be an engineer question. Has there been consideration of widening Prescott at all, since there is that section of property that you, that the Red Bulls would own? Kind of where the walking path now is along Prescott, where it's just all wooded, and then it hits the, the golf courses on the opposite side of that? Would there be consideration for widening that, or even putting sidewalks on the opposite side, or a path on the opposite side of Prescott? So it would be on two sides?
So I would say no, there's been no consideration to widening Prescott or Stockton. We've heard a lot of concerns about speed, vehicles going through there. Widening the roads would, right now it is effective, narrower roads do cause folks to go slower. So no, there's no consideration, especially because our trucks and cars are, are able to move through the development as it was designed. These roads were also designed for the, the 900,000 square foot of office space, all the traffic that went with that.
I know, but that's, that's not what's going there now.
The second, I guess, let me just go back to your question about sidewalks, no. We did look into sidewalks, and generally, whether it was looking at Stockton or Prescott, the idea was that we'd rather have as much buffer as we could on the, the Red Bull side of the roads.
Okay. And then the last question, I guess, and I'm, I'm hoping you can answer this, is that as a civil engineer, and if you've built other things comparable to this or similar to it, putting it in a, a huge residential area, is the consideration, you're bringing trucks and larger vehicles into the residence versus keeping your, I know in your statement just before, you said that you were going to try your best to, the traffic flow in off of Columbia Turnpike coming in, you were gonna do your best so that they, people exiting would make, they would make a left rather than coming right. But now what's happening, I guess, are you confident that bringing trucks into the development like that, delivery trucks, on a daily basis? Because I think that was something I had asked early on. That is the best location for a loading dock? You, so you're keeping the player, not the players, but visitors away from it? But now, but what actually is happening is the truck flow of traffic is gonna come into the residence area, and they will be able to exit? Will they be able to exit and make a left, a right, come back down Stockton, go east on Prescott, go west on Prescott? Will that be allowed to happen? There will be, will there be measures done to prevent them from, will there be an, an exclusive in-and-out kind of signage for them?
So I, I'll let Mr. Keller expand on this, because I know it is part of his presentation, but it is a combination of the design, as we did with the smaller radius to discourage things. There is an expansive signage package that's designed to funnel people out towards Columbia, and then certainly I know the Red Bulls will be working with all their vendors to, to make sure they're going in and out of the site the, the right way. So, but Mr. Keller really has, he does have a presentation with that in mind.
Okay, and just one last question offhand. I was unsure of the clarity. You had mentioned the groundwater is pumped out, so is it presently pumped out of the development? I mean, I've been there four years, and I can't say that I've ever noticed something coming in to pump it out. Is, I don't know what I'm, what I'd even be looking for.
They're doing it, it's on the, it's closer to the corner of Park and Prescott, it's near the bottom of the hill, but they are doing it. I can't give you any, I don't know when they're doing it either, but I do know it, it is part of their remediation plan.
So that's the location of where the pumping is done? Okay. And then it's tested? Is that what you had said? Once it's pumped out, do they test it? Or Or?
Technically, it's being tested before they're pumping it out.
Before they're pumping it out?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you for your time.
Hi. Good evening. Can, yeah. Okay. Not a problem. Okay? Better? Sorry. Hi. Sue Sartelli, nine Green Knells Road. All of my questions are engineering. Swear to God. Okay? First thing I just wanted to give for an FYI with the FAA, I do know a few people who are pilots. And you're, the Red Bull site is part, depending on the wind, the Red Bull site is part of the downwind leg of the final approach for the airport when the winds are going certain ways.
Sartelli, I don't think you're under oath if you.
Oh, no, I'm just giving information. Everybody was asking about that.
No, no, no.
Oh, you want me to finish? Okay. That's fine. Hey, no, I'm cool.
Let me finish, Ms. Sartelli.
Yeah.
Thank you. If you didn't hear me before, let me repeat myself.
No, it's okay.
This is, I will.
I'm cool.
This is, this is the time to ask questions.
Okay. Not a problem.
And when you wish to testify, you'll be under oath. We want it to count.
Okay. Not a problem.
Thank you.
That's not a problem at all. Okay. So I don't know if this is the best shot to show, but if you could show the parking lot area for me. Good. Okay. Now, this.
If I may, what exhibit are we showing on the record?
A six.
A six. Is this, this doesn't really show the entrance to that parking lot, does it? From the service road? I mean, I know it's going to happen. I just wanted to know, where was the entrance? What, I just want to try it. I'm trying to make lemonade out of a two-foot, out of a two-story lemon here. I'm just trying to.
You can see the 150-foot one dimension, this number?
Okay.
This is the entrance to the.
Got it. All right. Is there any reason why you could not move that entrance more towards the 192 number? Because then the Cube Smart would then become a sound abatement product, and it would also be a visual concealment. Because right now, it's right on the corner of the Cube Smart. If you moved it even another 20 feet more towards Columbia, the Cube Smart would act more as a concealment for us. Is there any reason why you couldn't do that for us?
The design as is, it has a guard booth, generally where you're saying, and for it to really, the traffic to work with getting in and out of the parking lot, it was designed to align with that far lane.
Well, is that guard booth where that 192 is? Is that that little?
It is.
Structure? Okay. So you can't go up to 107, 17, whatever it is? You can't go and cut half between the 151 and that 192 and have it come in? I'm just trying to get it further towards Columbia, just to try to help give us a little more visual concealment of the traffic. I mean, I'm not saying not to use the service road. I'm just trying to get more of a visual concealment of the traffic for us, especially in the winter.
There's also design there because we have one, two, three. There's about five mature trees that we sought to maintain as well.
Okay. That's fine. Hey, I'm cool with that. I'm just asking.
Okay.
Like I said, these are all questions that are, all right? So I was, just wanted to now touch bases on a lot of, I guess you guys call them schmooz? S-W-M-U?
Yes.
Call them schmoo? If I use the word schmoo, that's okay?
That's fine.
Okay, everybody, I'm using the word schmoo. I mean, I've used it for other things, but not these. Okay. So you have talked a lot about the two schmooz. The three?
Is one.
Well, schmoo three is the one that you're going to be covering over Field Four. And then you have the cap for the dieldrin.
Correct.
Okay. Now, that dieldrin is nasty stuff. And you're talking about natural attenuation? That stuff, that's known as a pop.
Ms. Sartelli, I have to ask you to please just ask the question. You're giving too much testimony. And you've got people behind you. We've got a traffic expert.
That's cool. You gave a lot of people a lot more time to start doing their prefaces and their questions.
I'm getting yelled at already.
All right. Here you go.
Doing a poor job. You heard me at the beginning. I was trying to do better than our.
Okay. I'm going to go right to the questions. You mentioned two schmooz. Are you aware, one? Which one are you talking about?
Schmoo three.
Okay.
The dieldrin cap is not a schmoo.
Okay. That's cool. Do you know that there are five, possibly up to seven more schmooz that are on this part of the proposed Red Bull's plan?
There were a lot of schmooz. There were a lot of other areas of concern. They've all been closed out by an LSRP under the oversight of the DEP.
Okay. Now, they were all remediated by Allied, and a lot of that was with three to four inches of sod, which has probably been completely eroded from all of the construction. So can you tell me, can you be confident right now to tell me that all of those three-to-four-inch sod caps on all of those? I've got the map here. It's going to be, can you tell me that you think those are all still intact after all the construction and demolition that's occurred?
There are no other caps on the site aside from the one underneath the Field Nine area for the dieldrin. There are no other caps on site.
Okay.
The only other cap that needs to be installed is under Field Four for schmoo three.
Okay. So then if I were to show you a map of where, I have, I unfortunately don't have a stick to be able, I mean, I don't have a computer to show you, but there's a map. And if you overlay that with where, say, that purple and yellow map you have with the groundwater and the electrical, I don't remember what number it is.
Ms. Sartelli, what is your specific question?
My specific question is that there are, there are those ground.
But the DEP, but the DEP closed those out. It's not part of this application.
You're going to be hitting old schmooz that have been sitting there?
Yes.
When you go through with your, with your stormwater? And I want to know.
And the township will have an engineer that will oversee this, and if those are damaged, they will make every recommendation to the applicant to address it properly.
Okay. So now, since we don't seem to know where all of these other schmooz are, but I have a map that shows it, if they're not marked.
Just to be clear, there are no other environmental areas of concern remaining where remediation is required.
Well, then why do we still have monitoring wells? We're not just monitoring for dieldrin. You've got other nasty things that are sitting on this big property. You've got Aldrin. You've got DDT. I've got a list here of all the contaminants, and it's big. And they're monitoring not just dieldrin with all of these wells. And I want to know if you're going to be impacting or hitting any of those pockets? Some of the stuff is two feet down. Aldrin is two feet under the ground. DDT.
The answer is no. We have the biggest incentive, the Red Bulls do, they're putting the players there, their staff is there.
I'm not talking about the players, because by the time you get there, everything's covered. What about the construction workers?
My point is, the answer is no. We're going to comply 100% with all environmental regulations, and I just want you to know, we have the biggest incentive. These guys did extensive due diligence. They're experts. That's what they get paid for.
All right. And let me move on. Next question. You haven't mentioned anything about dust control. Now, you actually did say in the stormwater report, Slide 15, Section 5, 5.3, it mentions about the control measures that will prevent the slowing, the blowing and movement of dust. What specifically are you going to be doing? Because even though y'all don't want to say it, you're going to be aerosolizing stuff that probably shouldn't be aerosolized, and you're going to be tracking stuff probably off the property that shouldn't be tracked off. The reason why we, this was Allied Chemical.
Ma'am, ma'am, again, I don't mean to be disrespectful.
I'm asking, what are your dust control? Okay. What are your specific dust control?
You ask the question, let him answer.
Okay.
We'll be doing dust control in accordance with the Morris County Soil Conservation District requirements.
What are you doing? You spraying water? Are you putting down? What are you putting down to stop it?
There'll be water sprayed. There'll be a water truck on site.
And that's it?
sprayed to control. Yes.
Okay. That's it. All right. We're done?
Thank you.
May I make sure I covered all the questions? So then you're not going to be doing any new soil samples or nothing anywhere? You're not going to be marking all of these other places that I have on a map?
The only.
Okay. The only capped place is S. schmoo three. Got it. I wish I could give this information then to the board. It is a picture of the map. It is a list of the contaminants.
Ms. Sartelli, at the end of the hearing, you will have that opportunity.
You don't, this does not need, when you guys talk and listen, you're like the jury. All you can do is make determinations by what is given.
But we're going to give you an opportunity to testify at the end.
At the end! That is not the time for you to be knowing about this stuff.
We won't make our decision until we hear from you.
Okay. Well, then you know what? What we're going to be doing is that since my questions were not completely answered, I will be contacting agencies higher than yours tomorrow. I will ask them the questions, and if they have any questions, they can get back to you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay.
Next, next question.
Good evening. Andrew Kessler, 11 Wolf Road. If we could go back to the color picture you had that shows the whole site? There was another one that, it showed Field Nine. It was in red.
That phasing map, maybe?
Construction phasing 810, maybe? This one?
There was one other one. I apologize. That's, that's fine. That's fine. So I want to piggyback Larry Kessler, 1 Aldrich Court. This was what he was trying to explain or get at, if I could point that thing.
Go, go right ahead.
Right along here, Stockton. We're talking about the, so when you're driving in or driving out, how close is this to the road and how close this black area? What is this black area?
Black area, the black area is a square or just, or shape.
No, the outline, is it a fence? Is it, what is?
Field will be fenced. Correct.
So how close is that fence to, you said you're putting sidewalks on Stockton? Will there be sidewalks along that fence?
Sidewalks. There will be the road. There will be a sidewalk, and then there will be the fence that encloses the field. There's also some plantings in there as well.
My question is, so from under the fence to the sidewalk and the buffering, what is the distance? It looks very close to the street. That's what I'm trying to get at.
And that's the visual that all the residents, especially along Aldrich Court and Stockton, that's what they see when you drive in and out? So that's our first.
Mr. Assiopi, will you be having a landscape architect testify? And won't these questions be better served by your landscape architect who's going to describe the plantings that'll be next to the fence? So Mr. Kessler, what I would ask, if you don't mind, is, it's a good question, and it sounds like there's a lot of people that are on Aldrich that care about this, and I think we've actually asked the applicant to consider.
Understood.
Building the berm earlier. I would ask if you wouldn't mind bringing that question back when the landscape architect's here, because he'll have a graphic that you'll be actually able to see it, and I think your point will make better sense at that time.
Understood and respected. Another question, they said the worst contamination is where Field Nine is, correct? Or schmooz, that's one of the main points?
It's not a schmoo.
Or could you explain that contamination on Field Nine?
It is a dieldrin, which is a pesticide. It was taken from where the current residential properties are, so that all those properties could essentially be constructed. It was moved, stockpiled in that area, and a cap placed on top.
So engineer being your expertise, that was done prior to people living there, correct?
Correct. That was a, yeah.
So disstrubbing that in Phase One or recapping that, what are the guarantees or, for the people that are living 120 feet from where you're building the field now that you're going to be opening up that piece of land? Health reasons?
Any work like that has to be overseen by a licensed site remediation professional, which includes assuring that during construction, that it's done safely for the folks who are doing the work and for the folks adjacent to the work.
And as mentioned before, the water trucks or whatever, what is, people live there. As you mentioned, you're just, it affects you, the players. They're not living there 24 hours a day. I'm just asking what protections, but you're going to say it's up to the.
Mr. Kessler, what you're going to get is somebody from the state, DEP, has a license, and he needs to protect his license by ensuring that the state's requirements are met. That's your protection.
But it's, as the board, and I totally, I sat on the board of pharmacy for New Jersey, and I respect you. And I, as a board member of the state of New Jersey, representing pharmacist, I always like to have all my knowledge first before making a decision.
So I promise you that the questions you are all asking about these environmental constraints, the board is hearing them, and I'm sure we're going to wad deeper deeply into these questions as this application progresses.
With that being said, in consideration with the development, was it necessary to have Field Nine there? Because we keep talking about the 900,000 square foot office complex. They were not developing that parcel of land at all. They were leaving it open. So being contaminated and being 120 feet away from people's homes, was that the best location? Or was that the best decision to develop that specific property?
Just to be clear, the contamination in no way affects the constructibility or developability of that, that area.
What about quality of life for people that live 120 feet away from it? Was that taken into consideration while doing this plan for Field Nine?
Yes, which is why the field was reduced in size and why it was shifted further away than the minimum setbacks in order to maintain some of the existing vegetation between the two as well.
And then also, you had said, right across from Aldrich, the building is going to be 49.7 feet, correct?
Yes.
So was that also the best location between that 49.7 feet and then Field Nine?
If I may, go to the town halls.
You might want to take the mic with you if you can, though.
Let's do this. Okay. Can you hear me now? So you have Field Nine here, and you have the buildings, 47, 49.7 feet and a field. Was that taken into consideration, quality of life for those homes that are completely surrounded by your complex now?
Yes.
And being an engineer, you feel that's acceptable to surround these homes with 50 feet of building on one side, a field on the other side, incorporating their home, home and privacy and daily quality of life?
Mr. Kessler, your questioning now is starting to, you're moving away from asking specific questions, and it's almost like you're putting him on trial and asking.
Well, he is the engineer that developed this or proposed.
But he's here to answer questions. You're getting into specific questions about his opinions and feelings, and that's not the kind of testimony that he's here to give.
In all due respect, everybody, we're feeling we're getting shut down.
It's a rhetorical question. You're making an argument, and everybody hears the argument, and the board hears it, and that's fine. But it's time to get illicit information based on questioning from the engineer's testimony,
and the real time to make those arguments is under oath.
Understood, but I just hope it's all taken into consideration, and because it's not just me, a lot of people feel we were cut short.
Of course, the board is here, these are volunteers who live in the community, that's why they're here.
No, and I totally respect and appreciate your time.
I'm on the other side of the golf course from you.
Understood. Now to the entrance, the parking lot for the players and where the loading dock is. So you say that's going to be a gated or a key gate access only for the players or workers?
Yes, some version of an access control system.
Do you know how far in or how many cars deep pulling from Prescott into that till you get to the gate?
The pro lot is more, the loading dock is 50 feet, the pro lot looks probably a little more than 50 feet, so.
Can you swing the mic back around? Please be careful.
Whoops.
This is A6.
Okay, so. So Prescott into the entrance, that's what I'm trying, so this is Prescott, correct?
Correct.
And this will be the entrance, correct, or, no, over here? So.
Where the shaded is.
Okay, so is this dark line here, is that going to be that access gate?
Yes.
So how many feet from the access gate to Prescott is that?
Oh, it looks, it's 140, it looks about halfway, so I'd say maybe 70 feet.
So I'm not a mathematician or an engineer. Pulling in the morning, let's say there's four or five workers and coaches coming in, will that backlog onto Prescott with school buses coming and regular traffic of the community, how will that affect?
No, we don't believe so, we've got a much smaller offset at the current facility off Melanie Lane. One of the things that we do know from observing and counting how the existing facility uses, this isn't like a typical office building, the players do roll in, but they roll in generally within an hour or two hour period in the mornings.
But could it?
It's not a morning rush to get to the office.
But could it be said three or four cars will be trying to access that at once? And backing up to Prescott is my point, and question of safety for other traffic coming up and down, backing into that? Was that considered as the best location rather than the service road where it doesn't affect the community and the already traffic that does flow through it?
We prioritized a berm with a large vegetative buffer.
I'm not talking about a berm, I'm talking about the backup of traffic, three cars trying to get that key gate open, and then a school bus coming down Prescott, those cars being backed up.
Again, you're getting argumentative, I think you've made your point, and we all heard you. I promise you, everyone on this board has heard you.
And I'm not trying to be, my nerves get to me, I'm not trying to get to be that I'm rude or anything.
No, no, you're not, and I don't mean that in a negative way. I, this is the proper word for it, you're very polite, and we do appreciate it, and we appreciate that you appreciate how hard we work. But your questions are not specific questions, you're asking him his opinions as to why they did something in one way or the other, so I'm just asking you to ask specific questions.
So how many cars that 100 feet could fit up before it reaches that gate? Let's say four cars are pulling into there to access it, how many could fit?
Mr. Keller will respond to that during his testimony.
Okay, all right, that's just.
Thank you, Mr. Kessler.
Thank you for your time.
Next.
Hi, Mary Gores, 23 Normandy Parkway. I have a couple of what I believe are.
Ma'am, could you just spell your last name for us?
Sure, it's spelled just like horse, but it starts with a G. Got it?
Yeah.
Okay, so these should, these aren't meant to be any lengthy explanation, just kind of quick questions. So since your testimony was last week or a couple of weeks ago, I've kind of forgotten exactly what you said. So did you cover under the noise umbrella, putting up like those noise walls that you see along the freeway, was that ever considered?
No.
Okay, because you felt the noise level was too low? From what you were going to generate?
Regulations, correct. With the design that we have. State and municipal.
I'm sorry, so I missed your answer, you felt that the noise level was not sufficient to require that according to the state regulations, is that what you said? Okay. Is there any chance that that could be lobbied for by the people who live in the neighborhood and don't want to hear the noise? Is that anything that could be done?
We don't believe it's necessary to comply, so I, I'm not sure what you would envision and how you would envision or where, but.
Well, I guess the lobbying would go to the committee here.
So once again, I'll make the same comment I made to Mr. Celli and everyone else. At the end of the hearing, you will have an opportunity to testify, and in that, that part of the hearing, you can tell us what you feel and what you feel we should do.
Okay.
In making a decision either for or against this application.
Okay, this is another question you won't like, but it's of high interest.
We like all your questions.
No, it's quick, probably the gentleman from Red Bulls should answer this. The Rockefeller Group originally had the land that you now have, is my understanding. So my question is, is, did you buy, or whatever you do, all of the land of the Rockefeller Group or just part of it? And if so, what is left over of the Rockefeller Group land, do we know?
That's a great question, and you asked the right person, because I represent, I don't, I'm not from the Red Bulls, but I'm an attorney.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And I also represent the Rockefeller.
Okay.
Rockefeller Group never owned the property.
Okay.
They had a contract.
Okay.
To purchase it, but they never took type.
Oh, okay.
We bought Lot Four from Honeywell, so we, Red Bulls bought Lot Four, so a portion of the property from Honeywell, and they have a contract to buy Lot Five from the owner, which is Vision.
Okay, and is there anything, do you know if there's anything left over then? That isn't like the condos, the townhomes?
I don't think, I don't believe there's any on the land in this project left over.
This, it's a good question, but it doesn't fit in the context of the application.
We're going to have to camp out here for the next year.
I think there's 81 acres comprised Lot Four and Five. Lots Six and Seven, if I recall correctly, are the two residential developments that already exist, East and West. And Lot Eight is an open space, a lot that is, was dedicated to the township many years ago by one of the applicant entities back then.
Okay, so the Barnum.
That's all, that's the entire tract.
The Barnum and Bailey Circus is not going to come to another lot.
They'd have to go to another lot.
Okay, another location.
Four, Five, Six, Seven, and Eight are taken.
Okay, okay, okay. And the final group you won't like, comment you won't like at all, the water.
Are you going to make a comment or are you going to ask a question?
No, no, it's, it's a comment, because you need to know.
You can't ask a comment, you can't give us a comment.
Carbon tetrachloride is what's going through the water. And it has 100 year or more life, half-life, so it will be there for a long time.
Thank you, thank you.
Did you get that?
Yes, thank you, thank you very much.
I'm trying to give him the damn map, and I can't do that either, you know? Okay, hi, Sue Sartelli, back one more time, real quick question. The sports court that is now taking over the goalie part, if you look, I think, because the, the plan, the phase map doesn't show it, they still show it as a goalie, but if you look at the eight, five, that colorized version, one that you have, there you go, the sports courts. Now, have you, and here's your question, have, have you figured out what you're going to be doing for sound abatement? Because we're going to be hearing basketballs, and we're going to be hearing tennis.
The question is the testimony, you asked your question, please answer her question.
We've agreed to, we're going to comply with the municipal and state standards on noise.
And so that means you would consider any noise abatement?
If it were needed, we would add something to comply with the municipal and state standards on noise.
Thank you, thank you. Next.
Good evening, thank you, Rich Tangle, 16 Featherly Road. Yes, Rich Tangle, 16 Featherly Road, that good? Okay, Mr. Barrington, you're the site engineer of record, correct?
Yes.
Will you be signing and sealing the final documents, construction drawings, site plan drawings that are used for the construction?
Yes.
You will, okay. Regarding the, the cap that's in place now, how did you become aware of that capped site?
We did an extensive due diligence before, as we were researching the property for potential development.
Okay, and have you worked at other sites that had capped contaminated soil?
Yes.
Okay, and you did development on a capped site?
Yes.
Okay, can you share with me what's the hazard if a cap is breached and something doesn't go right?
So when you say if a cap is breached, so first of all, before we're allowed to even touch the cap, we do need to apply to the DEP, our licensed site, we will engage a licensed site remediation professional who will be filling out, there's various forms that do need to be submitted to the DEP to basically breach the cap, as you're suggesting. Breaching the cap in this case would be the construction that we're planning to do. At that point, the LSRP would be the one really irresponsible, responsible charge to assure that we're complying with DEP standards, DEP requirements in terms of health and safety.
So based on what's underneath that cap, what is the potential hazard to the public in the area? Not someone mile away, someone a couple hundred feet away, like myself?
Negligible, I mean, the cap is there to, to keep you from touching it, to keep you from eating it, to keep you from coming into constant exposure to it. So the construction that's done, that the work will really have that contained within itself. The material that's touched there does not get distributed, that's a requirement from the DEP that any work in that area, so if we're putting a, a new drainage pipe through that area, any soil that comes out of that needs to stay within that shape. So it cannot be moved unless we're taking it off-site and exporting it in accordance with DEP rules and regulations.
So who prepares those documents, the plans, specifications, governing the work touching that cap?
I will be the engineer of record that defines what the new cap is. So if the new cap is a 24 inch field section, or if it's six inches of asphalt with a gravel base, I would be the engineer of record for the cap construction. The licensed site remediation professional would be responsible for the forms, for the oversight, for the reporting to the DEP.
Okay, now regarding the groundwater, the contaminated groundwater that's there, you mentioned earlier this evening that that is being extracted and put into a truck and driven away? I've been in the area over 30 years, I've never seen a pump truck or anything. Is, how is that done? I'm not aware of that.
Honeywell is in responsible charge for the groundwater remediation and monitoring. They are going to remain responsible for that work, so I, as I mentioned earlier, I haven't seen it. I haven't observed it, it's their responsibility, and they will be continuing in that role.
But you testified to how it's done, did they tell you that's how they do it? A truck comes and takes the groundwater away?
They have a system for pumping.
No, you mentioned a truck came and took it away, did they tell you that?
Whether it's a truck or a tank, I can't speak to which one it was.
Some vehicle takes it away, is that correct?
That would be how they, you would do it.
Okay, now, and I believe Mr. Slate's familiar with this, there's been some, there's a couple of stormwater runoff defects on that site. There was a pond that someone mentioned tonight, there was another area that was covering the fence that's six feet high, so that was fixed, but, so certain site things happen even though they're designed. But, so is there any stormwater runoff, which you're the design engineer on, is any stormwater runoff going off-site that may carry contaminants or even additional water to adjacent properties like mine?
There is runoff from the site that goes off-site, for example, if even looking at the image up there, the areas that are on the, the other side of the service road are off-site and will continue to runoff off-site. I will say generally within our site limits, we are constructing a new collection system to prevent anything, for example, everything from a building, everything from a field that we're constructing, we'll have a collection system that collects and pipes into the detention basins.
Okay, I'll clarify my question a little bit. So that pond that was mentioned tonight, that's to the west side of the site. My property is to the west, my neighbor recently had a small pond in his backyard, which never occurred. So there's drainage patterns have changed, so I'm just wondering, are you going to contribute to excess runoff to the west?
On your site, technically what we've seen is a portion of the Green Knoll area technically drains through the, through our site.
So.
So no, we are not contributing any runoff that would go, I guess, in a northwesterly direction towards the Green Knoll area.
Okay, because again, there's additional runoff there now, coming from the site. It's not coming from the west, it's coming from the east going west, so, okay, there's some issue there. Okay, I just, let me switch my questioning to the FAA side of things. So the FAA you mentioned is studying the obstructions you'll be putting up, whether it's a light pole, buildings, what have you, they're studying that, okay. So they publish a lot of guidelines. Is your office, or have you done a desktop study to see where their answer is going to fall? Because that information is available.
We did a desktop study to determine if we were in the glide path of the transition surface, which we showed, which our site is not. I think I mentioned before that the imaginary surfaces that we are impacting, probably the same surface that your house is probably impacting. So from that respect, we did look at this, we don't believe there's an issue, but I will say the FAA circulars, which do provide specifications for marking and lighting, do not tell you what to do in each, in every instance, and how to provide, how to mark everything, how to light everything. Once they tell you how to mark or light, then you can go to those specifications and say, yes, I can find, this is the red light they described, they told, they told me I needed. This is how, this is the fixture I get, this is where it gets installed and how.
Okay, so who's the expert testifying regarding the FAA requirements? Or is it you, or is it the lighting expert, who is that?
There is no expert testifying on this, because it's a filing, FAA will make a determination, and we will comply with their determination.
Okay, but I know, well, there's different ways to comply, I believe, with the FAA, so marking or lighting. So just for context, our neighborhood was subject to an FAA light that was improper and malfunctioned.
I'm sorry, I got to just ask, I'm sorry, it's either a question, or when we're all said and done, you're more than welcome to come up and give that testimony.
So your office did a desktop study looking at the FAA guidelines?
Yes.
Okay, what did they find?
We found that we are not impacting the glide path, we're not impacting the two most critical surfaces.
Are you a hazard to air navigation?
We don't believe we are, however, the FAA was put out notice to aviation professionals to provide comment on that.
Are you going to be an obstruction to air navigation?
I'll be careful how I answer this, because what we submitted is technically defined as an obstruction, whether the purpose of the FAA's evaluation is to determine exactly what you, what you've asked.
Okay, so you don't know right now whether they're going to say light every one of your light poles, which are 90 feet high, which again, would be a substantial amount of FAA lighting, you're not aware of how that's going to go yet?
I spoke to the FAA personally, David Maddox, who's overseeing the aeronautical study. He mentioned a few things to me, he said they would have zero intention of having a light at every pole and every building corner. He mentioned they would look to probably try to define a perimeter of sorts. He also mentioned he noticed that the water tower was not filed. He also mentioned that the eastern townhomes was not filed. So they are reviewing things in concert of where the trees are, where the townhomes are, where the water tower is, where our light poles and buildings are proposed, so.
So as the design professional for the site plan, who will make the determination? Who will pick the type of FAA lighting that the FAA comes back with and says you need, if you're on obstruction or hazard to air navigation, will that be you?
The FAA has a guideline for, tells you what, what type of light to use. So they're, what they're doing is, once they conclude their investigation, they will say, you need to put a red light type A on this pole, you need to put a, this type of light on the corner of the building here. At that point, you can go to the specifications, which will tell you exactly what light that is, how it's supposed to be powered, and how it's supposed to be installed.
Okay, knowing there's a concern here about obtrusive lighting and so forth, though, you will have a way to select things, there's a lot of different lighting out there, and.
Not really, it's pretty, if they tell us that there needs to be a red light on top of the pole, that red light is, it's an exact fixture.
Okay, red light, but you could go strobe light, incandescent light, there's a big difference there.
They will, they will let you know if it needs to be a steady light or a blinking light.
And they could be both, yeah.
It could be, what, what?
So.
What is typical, a lot of times what's typical is a white light during the day could be blinking with a steady red light at night.
Yes, but strobe is the big thing, that's the more obtrusive type of light, but.
Question?
Yes, is that correct?
It's all right, yes.
You agree a strobe is more obtrusive than incandescent light?
I don't know that I, it's.
Again, we're getting argumentative because we're asking.
If he's the expert in the lighting, so this is a lighting question.
I think, I think.
And it's a key point, some of the board members are scowling, but it's a key point to the neighborhood here. If you live there, you would have that concern too. So, Mr. Mayor, I didn't like your look there.
He's not the lighting expert, is what I was saying, you're asking a lighting question.
He's coming, he's the lighting expert.
He's going to talk about the FAA, I was getting, he was saying he's.
The white blinking lights are intended for daytime, the red steady lights are intended for nighttime use.
I understand that, it's the type of light bulb, if you will, okay.
Thank you.
All right, you don't have the answers, all right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Next, sir.
Good evening, I'll make this quick, I just had a.
We just, we just need your, it's like it's stereo.
Oh, sorry, Lee Resnick, 8 Delano Court, Lee Resnick, 8 Delano Court? Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Shall I spell, would it help if I spelled it? R E S like Sam and like Nancy, I C K.
Thank you. Proceed with your question, sir.
Thank you. We've heard a lot tonight about noise, light, and traffic. I have a very, a couple of specific questions and I'd like to, and they are real questions. They're not opinions. And I also have a request for the lighting expert, if she could address this when she comes and talks from, on the lighting question that I have. But on the traffic, when you did the study, did you actually?
Sir, sir, we're going to have the traffic expert come up and speak. He hasn't spoken yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought he.
No, this is the civil engineer. These are questions for like curbs and fences.
Okay. All right.
Traffic experts, I mean, assuming we get to the traffic expert, the traffic expert's coming up next.
But if there's a lighting expert coming, a traffic expert coming, we saw this, a landscape architect, an architect and a planner. So those would be the ones who handle each and every one of those areas. This is the civil engineer. That's from the civil engineering question.
Would, well, we talked to some about this. I was just wondering if sensors could be put in to measure sound, traffic and light to be sure that they handle and meet the state or county or city municipality requirements? Because if you can put in those sensors, and I know they exist, I've already looked, that would enable the county or the township to monitor that you're in compliance with the sound, lighting and traffic considerations that are being discussed here tonight. So the question is, are you able to put sensors in that measure light, sound and traffic? And to be sure that they meet the requirements? That, now, we've had all this discussion tonight. Now, maybe I can ask those questions of the individual experts. And I would ask that if that's the case, I'll shut up now and I'll wait for the experts to come. But I would ask that the Red Bulls ask their experts these questions and address them.
I would say for sound, I'll go one by one. I would say sound, definitely that's something we would do after installation was to confirm that we are indeed satisfying municipal and state requirements.
Stipulate to a post-construction noise audit to ensure compliance with the 58 dba daytime, nighttime and 65 dba daytime, dba levels, maximums pursuant to NJAC 7.29, which are ordinances patterned after the state ordinance that controls.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Let me ask a question, if I could, to the fire chief. If there was an emergency or a fire.
Yeah, you can't ask a board member.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. All right, let me, let me express this.
You can ask him.
Okay. If there was an emergency and a fire at one of the buildings, is it, is there any danger that we can't get fire trucks in there in a timely fashion or big enough, I mean, like a ladder or anything in there in order to address a fire that could potentially hurt people inside the facility and maybe even transmit over to where we live? And I just, what I'm wondering is, is whether or not the roads are sufficient in an emergency for those vehicles to get in there, because those are really big, big things.
They are. And as part of the site plan preparation, we solicited input from the fire official in terms of appropriate locations for hydrants, sufficiency of fire truck access, in general approach to how firefighting would be accomplished at our site to make sure that our site plan was accommodating fire safety.
Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you. Keith Silverman, 3 Delano Court.
Keith Silverman, 3 Delano Court. A lot of the colorized drawings you've been presenting have been very helpful. When will they be made available for the township so they can post it so that the public can review it as well?
Talking about the exhibits.
Yeah.
I believe they're, they're all posted.
Not the, not these newer colorized ones. Nothing's been posted in at least a month.
I thought they were submitted and I thought they were posted.
The exhibits will be posted.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
Alfred Demiro, 2 Aldridge Court. I failed to ask you one question. Who is the witness who's most familiar with the changed usage of the main building where there's going to be dormitory space? Who can testify to the intensity of that usage, the amount of square footage, et cetera?
Mr. Amarosa can testify to that.
Okay. Thank you.
My name is Vincent O'Connor, and I have a couple of questions for Mr. Barrington.
And Mr. O'Connor, your address, please?
3 Aldridge Court, Morris Town.
Thank you. It's required by the Minnesota Land Use Law, the only reason I ask.
That's correct. I'm curious whether the Red Bulls have an Azur right to construct a 49-foot building or will it be the subject of a variance waiver or some sort of special consideration? Especially when you take into consideration the fact that the building will be approximately 170 feet from residential homes.
There's no variance required for the height of the primary building.
Okay. Two, the 35 homes that are located off of Stockton Drive, they are ground zero for this whole project in a sense. There are nobody, no other place that is closer to what really is going on and it's going to impact us the most. And earlier this evening, you had answered a question with regard to an effort to mitigate the presence of this construction project over the many years that it's going to continue. And that it wasn't practically, you said, to build the permanent fencing or the placing the landscape shrubs in place prior to the end of the construction period, which you estimated to be maybe at the end of phase two. And you also mentioned, you know, some of the contingencies such as the availability of the, of the trees and things like that. But my question to you is, the appearance then of the temporary fence. The temporary fence is going to be pretty permanent from what I can see, since the project is on or extend over such a long period of time. And temporary fencing around the construction site that can take on many descriptions and we see them every day. Can we be assured that the Red Bulls will make every effort, regardless of the cost, to provide a temporary fence that would be, provide opaque screening or some maybe greening of the, of the fence to make it less intrusive on the other side, what we would be seeing on the other side of a normal construction fence, which usually is an open weave or just two-by-four, four-by-eight plywood?
We would concede to doing that, whereas fronting residential properties.
Thank you. And.
Excuse me. Mr. Warner, is that a stipulation?
I got it.
Thank you.
I take that back. I think Mr. O'Connor got it. I got it written down.
Okay. Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. O'Connor.
As long as it's in the record. And the last question is, with regard to Field Nine, and that question of the presence of the field, but do we have your assurance or the Red Bull's assurance that in the earlier phases, this property will not be used as a staging area for storage of equipment, storage of materials, and something that will generate a lot of noise and disruption to the residential properties?
Mr. O'Connor, I see, I see the applicant's counsel saying yes. So we'll make that a stipulation.
You will stipulate that this will not become a.
Now, he testified that there's going to be some infrastructure-type work, like.
I did hear that at the last meeting, that some piping would be necessary and the ongoing grading or transfer of material from one part to the other part.
But not staging area, we stipulate that.
Okay. And, and I think you assured us that with regard to, to suppression of dusts, we know from earlier construction to the, to the west of the Stockton Drive properties, that the dust could be quite hazardous, especially during the warmer summer months and the winds pervert pretty much on the west.
They've, they've already stipulated they will.
I wanted to be sure that it was understood that it would not, would even encourage them to use the suppression material even when it was not necessarily required, but just in order to prevent it from becoming a nuisance to the residential community.
We'll have the LSRP, the requirements of the DEP, as you know, is, you know, some of the strongest environmental requirements in the country. And so when we disturb a cap, like we're going to have to do here, like some many places in New Jersey, of course, because this cap's all over New Jersey, is strictly, strictly monitored.
All righty. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you're a second and third time around. That's acceptable, correct?
It's only my second time.
Yes.
This is a very short.
We're not arguing. We're not arguing. I'm asking a question of the chair.
Yeah, we, we do have a large application to get on. And if you have one question, we'd love to hear your question.
I have one short question.
Please ask it.
And I'd like to piggyback off what Mr. Kessler brought up.
And your name and address again, please.
Oh, excuse me, yes. Patricia Collins, 4 Green Knolls Road.
Thank you.
And Mr. Kessler brought up Lot Nine, and it's very close to the houses, et cetera.
But ma'am, ma'am, this application is only lots four and five.
You mean Field Nine?
Field Nine, Field Nine.
But please ask him the question.
I'm asking the question, if you please. And another gentleman asked, how many fields will be used at the same time? And people didn't know. At the very first meeting, we were guaranteed no more than two, no, I'm going to a question. No more than two fields would be used at the same time. My question is, a short one, why do you need nine fields? Why don't you get rid of the field in question here that's so close to everything?
So Mr. Amarosa is going to be testifying next. He's going to talk about the schedule and how the fields are going to be used.
And is nine necessary? Nine fields necessary?
They believe so, that's why they.
And would you be able to document why they're necessary? If only two could be used.
Mr. Amarosa is going to speak.
I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Rich Tangle, 16 Featherly Road. Just one question triggered by applicant's counsel that mentioned, who's monitoring the work at the site now? There's earthwork being done at the site now. Who's monitoring that work? And is that disturbing any capped hazardous sites?
You mean on Lot Five?
To the west, there's work being done. There's been earth moved.
So I assume it's Vision or their property manager.
And I'm aware of the work that's going on. It's soil being imported.
Being imported? Okay. It's not, nothing related to Red Bulls?
No. No, it's, it's an existing property owner, you know, that's bringing that material in anticipating that it's going to be used because the site has to be raised something along those lines.
Oh, so there's another owner still? Okay. I'm, I was confused on that. There's another owner.
They own one lot and they're the contract purchaser of another. That must be the other lot owned by who currently owns it that they're in contract with purchase of from.
Okay. The current owner.
Mr. Tangle, I think you asked your question and it was answered? Did you have another question?
Um, no, it wasn't answered because.
I think Mr. Slate answered the question.
Well, who is monitoring that work?
My office.
Your office, is that an LSRP?
Contacted me and I think Soil Erosion Sediment Control from Morris County is aware of it as well.
Okay. And the soil's clean and all that?
Yes.
That's being brought on? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
James Kavanaugh, 11 Featherly Road. I just have one question for the testimony that was given by Mr. Barrington. Just the question is, would you be good enough to do some double-checking on the comments that were made earlier? Because I think there is a difference of inputs. The question is, at the, I believe it's 18 Green Knolls, there's been a water problem that was just mentioned. Just if you would just take a look at the due diligence when you look at the topography, because for the last 54 years, there is a downslope that does possibly impact. So I'm not giving testimony as a fact, but just to the due diligence area might, might be helpful.
We'll review that with Mr. Slate's office.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We just need your name and address.
I'm Lois Lieberman, 12 Ohika Place. And I just, 12 Ohika.
Okay, thank you.
O H E K A. Something I'm just hearing here for the first time, and maybe I'm not hearing it correctly. Do you not own all that property yet?
We do not own the property. It's common for an applicant to be under contract to buy. So we're under contract to buy a portion of the property. We own Lot Four, which is the old Honeywell site. We're under contract to buy the other piece from Vision. Yes.
Ah ha. And when do you expect that purchase to go through?
If and when we get approved, and this is common, this is universally done. It's unusual to do what we did with Honeywell, which is buy the property before we have approval.
You saw it now.
It's more typical for you to sign a contract that says we will buy it if and when we get approved.
Okay.
Do you have another question?
No.
Thank you very much. Yes, Mr. Kessler.
You'll get to know me very well.
I think we do know you, sir.
Can we go back to any of the color pictures? I just want to go back. You were talking about the whole 85-acre lot and you're only developing 50 acres. I just need some clarification and I have some questions.
And just for the record and for the court reporter, again, full name and address?
Andrew Kessler, 11 Wolf Road. So I have a question, the property along Columbia Turnpike.
This is Exhibit A.
You said you are not developing. Is it, is it true or not? Isn't that wetlands and cannot be developed?
A portion of it is.
So a majority of that couldn't be because it was wetlands, correct?
Well, right now, a majority can't because the setback was set 450 feet off of Columbia.
Okay. So that does explain why you're not developing it, not making it look like you're being good and not developing the whole property due to other circumstances. Next question. The pond that we spoke about that has some algae or that's close to Columbia Turnpike, who owns that pond as of now? Was that part of the Honeywell site and it's in possession of the Red Bulls ownership now?
That is part of Lot Five currently, which the current owner is Vision.
Okay. So it's not yours. And back to developing not all the parcels of land, if we could get that picture that showed the townhomes in Ohika, where you had the outline of the whole property? I don't like the expression, "These are very important questions to us. It affects our lives." And now I'm getting a very, very, you know, I could read.
What shows the property? What you said. I don't have the name and have the red and purple that show, you know, what you all.
It's the phase in plan.
The constraints? Constraints, the environmental constraints. We're trying to help. The environmental constraints? This one? With the colors?
No, it's the phase in plan.
Talking about the original.
This one?
Yeah.
Talking about the original shovel where you went through the perimeter, the ore site.
This one?
I'm sorry. I should have written down. Maybe this one. It was a colored one. And it shows either red or purple of the whole property.
Maybe you could ask your question, Mr. Kessler.
Okay.
So. Back to the other question of not developing the whole parcel. So I got my answer that most of it's wetlands and cannot be across Columbia Turnpike.
Most.
Most, most. So behind Ohika, it's a very, it's an incline and it's a big hill. So how would you even go to develop that behind the townhomes anyway for development? Because you, you made it seem like you're not utilizing all 80 acres, but I don't think it's possible as an engineer to develop or put into a, excuse me, Rasiopi?
Mr. Kessler?
Yes.
I think you made your point again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to make another point that is a very important, we all live here and this.
It's just, listen, we're.
You don't want to be rushed either.
No, no, but I don't want you to think that because we're as sensitive to it as you are.
It's the consensus of everybody. I feel this is being rushed.
What you're not hearing is that we have, you're, a lot of people are asking questions that are really a traffic question, and we're allowing it because this hearing was bifurcated. If Mr. Barrett was able to give his full testimony and ask questions, we probably would have cut you off quicker because we have other witnesses that will answer these questions. And I'm not just saying it to you, Mr. Kessler. I appreciate your being here. I'm saying it to everybody. This board is not trying to rush anybody or push anybody out the door. We are committed to being here as long as it takes, not tonight, but over the course of time, to make sure that you're comfortable that we have heard your questions, their answers, and that this board does a good job of land planning for the township of Morris. That's our job. So when I'm, I'm not trying to be rude when I cut someone off. I'm just trying to move it along because there are other witnesses that you can ask this specific question that you're trying to get out of Mr. Barrett, and it may make more sense to everyone to let them get their testimony on the record so that you can hear it, as well as all the exhibits that they're going to show you.
So the next witness, is it Mr. Amoroso?
I don't know. It's 9:40 and we're stopping at 10 o'clock. So I might just sing a song to you for the next 20 minutes. Mr. Rasiopis doesn't mind paying for it. Thank you. So we're going to close the public testimony at this point. And Mr. Rasiopis, I'm.
Public questioning.
Public questioning. I apologize.
I can understand why, though.
I'm a little flustered. I apologize. Mr. Rasiopis, what do you have for us tonight?
I think, I think, you know, we have two others, but obviously we have 20 minutes.
No, well, we're not going to kill you at 10 o'clock, but.
I think we can start and maybe at least finish direct on Mr. Amoroso because this board had asked, and some of the residents have asked about the schedule. So Mr. Amoroso spent some time putting together typical schedules, week in the life of a Red Bull facility.
Okay.
I think he could get through them. I'm sure he won't answer all the questions, but I think we can get through his direct in less than 20 minutes.
Your application, counselor.
And while we're switching over, Mr. Amoroso, you remain under oath, as you know, correct?
Correct.
And you testified as a fact witness, so we don't have to ask if your license remains in good standing. You could continue to testify as a fact witness. And what?
Yes. And.
I'm sorry. She's taking a minute.
We can take a three-minute break.
Okay. The, the, please proceed, Mr. Amoroso and Mr. Rasiopis.
John, and he's saying.
Chair's permission.
Of course.
All right.
Quick question. You may have just said, Mr. Warner, witness has been duly sworn, duly qualified.
Remains, remains under oath, and he testified as a fact witness, not an expert. So no need to, you know, go back.
Just to remind the board, he testified the first of the three nights we've been here so far.
Correct.
That is correct.
And Mr. Amoroso, do you want to just explain what exhibit you're going to show so we can mark them into evidence and then we get that out of the way?
I think we're up to A11.
Okay. So at the request of the board, I went back and developed four sample schedules that, based on the current operations at the current facility. So we have a sample winter training schedule, that would be your A11, a sample spring schedule, which would be your A12, a sample summer schedule, A13, and A14 would be a sample fall training schedule. So one of the things that was asked in the first conversation, as I was trying to go through and develop and explain how the site would be used and what the various Red Bull entities and teams would be operating the site, you know, we got this request. So I went back and I gleaned through our master schedules for the Hanover site and pulled out for what I felt were indicative of the each time of the year, each season of the year as to what was going on at the facility. You know, so one of the things, when you look at January, I know this might be a little hard to see. I had the whole page up there, but I don't think you can, let's see if I could do the whole page. No, that's not going to do it. I'm using somebody else's computer, so it's not exactly here. Fit page, fit page. So that's the, that's the entire schedule for the, for the one week and the sample winter training schedule. I picked January 2022, so this is something that just happened this past year, the week of January 23rd, running from Sunday through Saturday. And these are the, the number of events that were happening on, happening on the site at the time. So as you can see, you know, December, January, and into early February are the lightest times that activity is occurring on site, primarily because the MLS first team is in hiatus at that time. It's in between seasons. Also, the academy program has a downtime in December and early January for the holiday season. And the, any other activities surrounding our tenant Gotham FC, they're also in hiatus. They're out of season. So there's not much going on in regard to that. So the activity that you see here is around, you know, just some academy programs and some regional development school training sessions that were going on. And as you can see, there is some activity on the Sunday where we have, try to zoom in here if I can. So on this particular Sunday, January 23rd, there were a series of one, two, three, four youth games that occurred on the site, starting at 10:30 in the morning and roughly running about two hours each with a little gap between them. With that, the youth games, you know, we're looking at matches that two teams between 20 and 24 players and a potential for about 80 parents being on site at the time. So that ran through approximately 6:00 PM. So being that this was the winter time, I actually went back and checked out what sunset was on that date. So the field lights would have been on for that last match that started at 4:30. And then the rest of the week was just some evening schedule with, starting at 3 o'clock with the other U17 teams, the U12 team coming back. Then on Thursday night, there was a regional development school practices that went from 6:00 to 9:00 PM, and then some additional timing with some other academy games, or excuse me, academy practices happening in the afternoons at 3:00 and 5:00. And then on Saturday, the 29th of January, there were several U15 games against other, TSF is another youth soccer academy. They played two games at 1:00 at 4:30 and 6:15, the U15s and U17s. So the second, both of these games, the lights would have been on for those, those events. Going to jump to a spring schedule, bounce back and forth between fitting it to the full page so you can see. So once you get into May, obviously it gets much higher levels of activities because now certainly, you know, and I tried to color code this a little bit. The, the pink color that you see up there is the MLS first team. The green color is our youth education. They had a, youth programs had a field education program going on where they bring in coaches to train them on how to mentor and coach youth. So there was a program going on, on that Tuesday with that. And then the dark green and lighter greens are academy either matches or practices. The light blue batches or light blue areas is our tenant Gotham FC when their professional team practices were occurring in the morning. So you can see, starting around 10:00 AM in the morning is when the field activity started and continuing on through the day. Most nights ending around 8:00, but some nights going to 9:00. And the same type of, you know, when we start looking at the population of people that are on site at these different times, you know, the greater activity during the early part of the day, starting at 10:00 with, say, if we look at Tuesday, it looks like there's a lot of activity there. I'm sure that the youth programs, program probably had about 50 coaches out there. So that was a probably fairly intense training program that goes on. But then if you look at the Thursday date, you could see that there's less intense. The first team was practicing at 10:00 and that's, you know, up to 30 players. The Gotham FC was also practicing at that time, and there's 25 players there. And then as it moves through the day, it decreases where you start having U17 teams come in and then the lower academy teams coming in where there's, you know, 20 players on those teams. So the populations, as you get later in the day, start to decrease down to, you know, at this last practice, there's 20 or 24 players on the field and maybe five or six coaches and no parents or anything. You know, we do look at that Saturday, very heavy activity on that day with regard to different, I'll blow it up a little bit so we can see it. With that, there was a, the first team was actually, or the second team was actually trading that day. Then there was also academy programs that were playing other academies. In this case, they were playing the Philadelphia Union Academy. And you can see the U12s were playing a nine by nine match. So that's a much smaller field, much smaller, much less players. So, you know, the U12s are 12-year-old kids. So they play on a smaller field. Then the U14s, the U13s, and the U12s running through about 515. And there was an overlap here where, you know, there were probably two or three fields in play, you know, to cover, to get all of the academy practices in all at the same time. One other thing I want to point out is that there's, you know, there's, there was a pre-academy training. There's, there's actually every year they do an annual pre-academy invitational. And it's an invitation only to a day event that occurs once annually generally in the spring, where eight teams on a day come in consisting of 10 to 12 players per team, and eight teams on day two, also consisting of 10 to 12 players. And out of that, the whole idea is to choose players that will then advance in and be invited to come participate in the pre-academy. But it's a one-time event that happens in the springtime. That's a little bit more intense going around it. Then we can move to our summer schedule. And as you can see, it's a little bit different. The, what this is showing, I picked a week in June, the last week in June of this year, when our youth programs were actually running a camp program. As you can see, the camp program started at 8:30 in the morning and ran through 3:00 in the afternoon. And the camps have 80 to 100 participants and run generally from nine to 10 weeks during the summer. So they start this last week of June and they would run through, through August. And you can see that's the majority of what was happening there. There's also some additional, Gotham FC was practicing. And for some reason, our first team was training later in the day, probably because they were getting ready for a nighttime match. And the coaches, the current coach likes to push practice later in the day when they have a nighttime match coming up. So that's why that was happening. And then they disappear from the schedule, which means I believe they probably played on Thursday or Friday and were traveling the rest of the week. So they have to get in market to wherever they're going, at least a day in advance of a match. So if they were playing Saturday, they probably traveled Thursday and practiced at that site Friday and then match on Saturday. This also shows that the pre-academy practice on Sunday and RDS clinic in the evening from 6:00 to 9:30 PM, and then a couple of other evening practices that occur during that time. And this was also. Oh, there was, the youth programs had a scrimmage between their individual programs that night. That would have been a coaches scrimmaging each other. Moving on from that, we go into the fall. And you can see the schedule is still kind of built up, but there's still, you know, there's gaps in it. And, you know, there's heavier times as you get later in the day with the academy programs and also the activity on Saturdays and Sundays with academy matches at different times throughout the day. You know, when you're looking at a population of 20 to 24 players for those different matches and up to 40 players total for the match, with up to about 80 parents attending those matches. And of course, you know, there's some nighttime stuff that's happening as it goes to 9:00 PM a couple of nights. And you can also see the first team was practicing later that night, because I believe on that Wednesday, they had a home match in the evening. So the coach, as I said, the current coach likes to move practice later in the day, on the day before a night match to get the players more accustomed to it. But, you know, once again, you know, the, the number of players that you look in there, you know, the key takeaway is that any given day, you know, there's, there, between the number of players that are on the pitch and the number of players, people that are on site, we're looking at about 100 people total on site at any one given time, even though the schedules look clearly dense. But if you took one hour out of that day, you're looking at less than 100 people on site at any one time. And that's basically it.
I only have one question because it's been asked, so I'll ask it of you. Why did you choose, why did you choose more fields here? I know the answer, but for the benefit of the public.
For the benefit of the public, it's quite simple. You know, the, currently, we operate on four fields in Hanover. As you can see, the schedule gets very tight and there's a lot of usage that happens and a lot of wear and tear on those fields. It doesn't allow for the fields to regenerate in the summertime when they're not growing as fast as they would be in the spring or fall. So it creates that, that problem with it. There's also, you know, there's always a delineation, you know, the professional fields will always be the professional fields. The academy fields will always be the academy fields. So, you know, there is a need to have up to four professional fields, two for each of the MLS first team, and then two for the women's team at the practice on, as well as, you know, our second team, second MLS team will rotate between those fields as well to keep them fresh. The other fields will be strictly designated for use by the academy programs. Specifically, there's one turf field that mostly the U12s, U13s will practice on because that could be divided up into 9v9 fields, which they practice on more readily. You know, they don't usually play on a full-sized field. And additionally, the competition pitch would remain only as the competition pitch and be played on for competitive games, competitive academy matches on the weekends, and nothing else, nothing else would be, you will not be used for practice. Field 9 is designed as a 9v9 pitch to be used solely for the academy camp, or excuse me, the youth programs camp programs. And therefore, it was, there's no lights on it. And it was designated that, you know, as I testified in my initial testimony, that from 8:30 AM to 4:00 PM on any day is when the camps would be held. There would be nothing beyond 4:00 PM in the afternoon on those fields.
Thank you. I'm going to open up questions now to the board members, and I'll start with Mr. Flowers. Sorry.
Not a lot of time to formulate my questions.
But we can go to Ms. Van Order and come back to you.
Hold on, hold on. All right. So we're talking, yes, sir. All right. So you're talking about how many, how many fields? Obviously, there's been a lot of questions on that. So you said two for the MLS first team, two for the women's, one turf field, U12, U13, one competition pitch. You've got the field nine for the youth camp. How many for the academy?
Two.
Two. So two, four, six, seven. That's eight, isn't it? Where's the ninth field?
No, I did mention Field 9 as the youth camps. So two, two for the MLS first team, two for the women's team. MLS second team will rotate between the two and the four. The small 9v9s, large pitch, actually 9v9 turf field would be for the younger academy players. Fields, six and seven would be for academy only. And then Field 8, which is the competition pitch, would only be used for competitions. No other practices or anything else would occur on that. And then Field 9 was solely for youth camps.
Okay. When you were planning this, did you make any effort to try to figure out a way to eliminate Field 9?
No, we actually, in our initial planning, we had the competition pitch in that location. And that was ideally suited for something like that because it was exterior to the compound, so to speak. So we were trying to keep an area where visitors that were coming to the site would not be, you know, getting into the overall site. They would come to one location. It could be a very controlled environment. Parking and everything access would be very controlled, and it would not impact anything that was going on across the street. We soon realized that that site was not large enough to hold a, you know, a grandstand or bleachers or even enough parking or enough of the size of a field house without extensive work to that slope and encroaching upon the pond that's in front of it. So that was the option to decrease the size of that field to a 9v9, which is much smaller than a regulation size or the other size. Provide a small restroom. much smaller than a regulation size of the other size. Provide a small restroom area space there for anybody that's participating in a camp and a small parking lot for dropping off of the campers.
If you were to eliminate field nine from your plan, what would be the impact of that on your operation?
It would increase the amount of traffic on the service road because then we would have to move all of that camp operation to field five at the back end of the site. And that means that we would have traffic coming down only into that area and we'd have to redesign the parking lot to accommodate that and to accommodate that traffic and probably add additional fencing to segregate that field from the rest of the site.
Thank you, Ms. Hanover.
Thank you. That, that was really helpful. I'm just, I guess I'll ask an obvious question and that is that you're going from four to eight fields. You say you're doubling your fields. And I understand that there's a lot of value in having more fields and I appreciate, you know, the regeneration and et cetera. Do you, do you anticipate, or, you know, is there a plan to increase the size of your operation with these eight fields? And if so, you know, what, how does that, how, how is that being, how is that being envisioned?
The only increase in the operation would be the addition of a owned women's professional team. Currently, we have arrangement with Gotham FC where they lease space for us and practice at our facility. You know, that would be something down the road. In addition, the addition of a girls' academy program would be part of it. And that was the phase three buildings that we talked about early on. But other than that, the operations would stay the same. There's no, you know, you can't, you don't double the amount of academy teams that you have. When you have an academy, you just have the number of teams that you have in each age group and that's it.
Thank you.
Chief Gunn?
No questions for this one.
Mayor Joe Orfe?
Mr. Flowers asked my question already.
Oh, great. Ms. Wilson?
So I have, are we going to get, we will get copies of these schedules? I appreciate the schedule. I couldn't really see it from here.
We have hard copies here that we can give you right now. But also, they will be, I believe they've been submitted to be posted.
Thank you. I will take a hard copy and I'm glad to know it'll be posted. My other question may be best answered by the lighting person, but I'll ask it.
You want to wait then?
No, I don't.
If it's an operational question, I certainly can answer.
Well, it connects. It overlaps. So I see that on some of the days, the activities stop 4 o'clock or, my question would be, I mean, we've said sort of tentatively that the lighting goes on until 10:00 in the fields. Can, if there's no activities planned on the fields, can the lights be turned on?
There will be no lights. These master schedules that I used are exactly what the operations team uses to set the schedule when the lights are on and off. Mr. Zoller will testify to this, but we, our lighting system uses a scheduling program that runs through their system and, you know, turns the lights on and off when we want them. And if there's nothing that's happening on an evening, like if there's nothing that's going on there this evening, they're off.
That's good to know. I appreciate that. Thank you.
And this additional part that it's set to the schedule, whatever, whatever's happening, usually a half hour after this, the practice ends is when the lights go off.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, I think previous testimony, I think, said, I put in my notes that the games, games were usually like every other weekend because they were home and away. Yet every schedule you've shown has shown games on Saturdays and Sundays.
Right. So, so I kind of shot myself in the foot on this because I showed you the worst case out of, out of these months. So yes, that is true, that not every weekend has this intensity. You know, there, I would say this happens twice a month. We would have, you know, Saturday games and possibly Sunday games and then vice versa. But it's, it's kind of a, you know, it's hard to understand their schedule, but that's generally what happens is that they do alternate between home and away. And usually when the academy goes away, all of the teams go at the same time. Because it's usually they're playing. And as you can see, like with Philadelphia Academy coming to play, the Red Bulls Academy, they all came with all their different teams and we would go to them with all our teams.
Thank you. Ms. Murphy?
Just want to verify a comment that you made during your testimony, that in any given hour of the day, you would have no more than 100 people on site because they aren't in every field all the time.
That's correct.
We're really, we're looking at an order of magnitude in terms of numbers of folks on site within a particular timeframe.
Right.
100 is a good number for us.
100 is a good number, yes.
Thank you.
And the only thing I will qualify that with is that on Saturdays or Sunday matches, that number may be 150.
And we're talking about fields, right? On the site?
No, I concluded the entire site.
I mean staff? That includes staff?
I was thinking on the field because clearly, clearly you have people.
I don't want to argue with counsel.
Yeah, coaches and parents and, and players, whatever their age.
Right.
But, so it's 100 to 150 would be the parameter.
Correct.
And if somebody's in the dorm, I guess we're not going to really count them on the field, right?
Great. Mr. Quillen?
Thank you. So I, I think this is very helpful to see what has been the schedule in your current location in the recent past. And it's, I'm glad that you pointed out that this, these are sort of the worst case that you've had in the recent past when the competitions are at home, let's say, rather than away. But I do want to ask you, you're not, you're not saying that these schedules are something that you're committing to for the future, that the intensity that we see on these graphs is something that the Red Bulls are saying they will not exceed in the future. Isn't that correct?
Well, I can't commit to the actual schedules because as I testified originally, you know, we're not like a elementary school or a high school where we're in session from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM every day, Monday through Friday. The schedules have flexibility in them. So there's, you know, as I said, with the home and away schedules, yes, there's going to be certain Saturdays and Sundays, probably every other week during, during their seasons when there's going to be intensity and matches being played on site. Will the practices remain exactly as they are? I don't know. They could change in a number of different ways, but I don't see, you know, this, this is based on the number of teams that we have. So if we moved, even, even if we went to a women's professional team, that's pretty much already represented by Gotham FC. The addition of a girls' academy would increase the academy program and academy practices that you would see. So that might add additional, you know, density or additional, you know, population to the site at that time in, at once phase three is completed, more than five years down the road.
You could add to, you could, let's see. So right now you have one team of each, at one age 14 team, but you could create a second age 14 team, for example, couldn't you?
No, we would not do that because in an academy program, you only have one U-14 team. You don't run more than that. Our academies don't have other U-14 teams. So it's not like you're, you're accomplishing anything. You're just adding more players and then they're not getting the benefit of the academy program itself. So it doesn't, it doesn't make any sense to add a second boys' U-14 team. It would, you just stay with the number of teams that you have in each category, which is one team in each category.
The other academies don't have two teams for that age group. But the other teams, the other academies could add a second team as well. It just seems to me that there is some possibility that since you're more than doubling, let's call it doubling, the number of fields that you have from your current complex to this one, that you may find ways to increase the intensity of usage over time. It could take a few years and you might not do it at all, but it's at least possible that you would increase the intensity from what we see here.
In the MLS academy system, no, that would not happen because they're, you know, they, I don't want to say they mandate the number of teams, but there is not any benefit to have two U-12 teams, to have two U-17 teams. There's no benefit gained by it. It just, it doesn't work. You know, the only thing that would add additional academy program, as I said, was at the time and when and if we add a girls' academy program, you know, five or six years down the road. That would then also add, you know, obviously that would be something that you would ramp up. You would start with a U-12 team and then every year add, as those girls progress up through U-17, you would bring on another team below it until you had the five matching girls' program teams against the five boys' teams.
Thank you, Mr. Quillen.
That would, I'm not finished yet, Mr. Aliso. So that would increase the, if you had all of those girls' teams, that would increase the intensity that we see on these schedules substantially?
No, I wouldn't say substantially, you know. So let's look at Monday, the 20th in this instance, you know, if we had a, I'll kind of see if I can blow this up a little bit. You know, in the afternoon on, on this particular day, you have a U-17 team, a U-12 team, and you, 12 and 15s and 13s and 14s practicing all at the same time. You would have the same number of girls' teams playing at that same, in those same time slots. But on, you know, on those, you know, they would have to, that's when we start getting into field management and they'd be arguing over who's going to be on which field. So yes, that's why you need eight fields. Okay. That was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quillen. Chairman Benoit?
I'm good. Thank you.
Great. We're going to show of hands how many people from the public would want to, I'm going to do that just a second. Just want to get a sense of how many people from the public would have a question. So we can determine. Okay, very good. So we're going to have our board professionals ask questions and then we're going to close the hearing for the night. And we will come back at a date that will be announced tonight. And we will open up with a brief summary. So please give us the summary this time, brief summary, so that people understand where you left off. And we'd ask that you don't ask the same questions if you come back that the board has already asked because theoretically it's been answered. Thank you. Just trying to move this along efficiently for everyone. I know it's late and I really appreciate the fact that the public comes out and stays here till 10:15 at night. I know it's important to you because it's your home. We're just trying to move this along. Thank you. Mr. Slate?
I have a question.
Mr. Warner?
Just one. The, if I understood your testimony correctly, there were some components that I would, I viewed as the number of players and associated family members, what have you guessed. Given the number of fields, it's self-regulated in certain senses. Field management, you mentioned, and the like. So for example, you don't use nine fields at once, correct?
Absolutely correct.
Okay. So maybe you can very briefly summarize and highlight for everyone's benefit how that works so that the board, it seems as if the board members, rightfully so in my opinion, and I suspect members of the public, want to have an idea of how intense it would get vis a vis numbers of people on, on the fields and the like. But, but how, more importantly, how intense it won't get.
All right. So just using this schedule that's, that's on the screen right now, which is a fall schedule, you know, you can see in the morning timeframe, there is a first team practice, oh, well, let's go to a day where, you know, Thursday looks, or Thursday looks like a good day. Because you have a first team practice and women's team practice all occurring between 9:00 AM and 2:00 PM. So that would essentially entail either one or two fields. You know, in general, the first team practices on only one field at a time. Sometimes they practice on two fields depending on what they're doing. You know, they break up into different squads, they different two goalies, stuff there, you know, they change around. So that's two fields in use for that. And the same thing on the women's side, there would be two fields in use for that.
And whether it's one field or two field, it's the same team, group of players, you're just splitting them up. And if there's anybody watching, it's the same number of people watching or what have you, right?
Right. So if you're looking at, you know, the first team, which is like, say, 30 players, you know, that's 15 per field if you want to get down to specifics that way. But it's 30 distributed over those two fields. The same thing with the women's team, it'd be 25 players distributed over two fields. Actually, that was a bad day to pick because there's nothing happening in the afternoon. So let's jump over to the next day where there's a lot of activity happening in the afternoon. So you see at 3 o'clock, the U-17s come in. So they would be on one field and that's 24 players on the U-17 field. And then at 4 o'clock, the first team's out there practicing again. So they would be on their other two fields at that time distributed, you know, over those two fields. At 5 o'clock, we've got the 13s and 14s and the 12 and 15s all practicing. Now, the majority of them, the 12s and 13s would be on the same field because they would be using the large 9v9 pitch, large pitch that has the 9v9 pitches on it because they practice on smaller fields and they don't take as much space. They're younger kids. They don't run as far and, you know, it's, it takes less space to occupy them. So the 14s and 15s would be occupying another pitch or two pitches. So in that instance, we've got probably one, two, three, four pitches occupied at the same time in this timeframe between 3 and 5 o'clock, looking at probably anywhere from 40, 20, 20, 40, 30, 70. So like 70 players out on, on the fields at any one given time in that, that time block.
Is it fair to say that at any one given time, you're not going to have more than, or generally wouldn't have more than three groups on anywhere from one to five fields or six fields at any given time? In other words, for, for field regeneration and other reasons?
Correct.
Is that relatively accurate, fair to say?
I think that is very fair to say that you wouldn't have that.
And is that where you get your 100 to 150 people on the field? By on the field, I understand you to mean some of them are literally on the field, some of them might be spectators on the field.
Or coaches, 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 trainers, anything else. In general, there's another 10 or so people that are associated with the practice that, you know, kit manager, water, water guys, you know, all of that kind of stuff as well.
But is that at least part of the basis why you're comfortable in estimating 100 to 150 as being roughly the maximum on-field players and personnel and spectators at any given time at this?
Yes.
On, at the nine fields?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay. That helps me at least. Thank you.
Mr. Phillips?
No questions.
Mr. Fissinger?
It's a quick question. What happens in inclement weather? Say, I guess, say on Tuesday on this schedule, it rains. Does that, does all those activities get moved to Wednesday or do they get canceled? What happens when you can't use the fields?
In general, it depends how hard it's raining. Because, you know, they play soccer in all kinds of weather. So they would practice in all kinds of weather. First team would most likely be out there. So they, their practice would not be canceled unless it's really, you know, it has to be really, really bad for that to happen. But that's where the, eventually the indoor field comes in, where some of those practices would be moved inside to, you know, use the indoor field during that time. Now, obviously, that doesn't happen until phase two is completed. But in the interim, you know, they either get canceled and they most likely will not get rescheduled for the following day because of other commitments of the players. And, you know, that's one of the things that we have to understand here too, is that these academy players all have kind of another life. You know, they have school that they go to. So they, they're not always available. And that's why they try to set these schedules for specific nights so that they know that they'll be available on those nights. And it's one of the reasons why the regional development school practices is on Sunday nights because generally those kids are playing with other, their youth teams or their high school teams or not high school, but, you know, club teams on Fridays and Saturdays. So they're not really available until Sunday to participate with the, the regional development school.
Great. So we're going to, Mr. Fissinger, do you have any other questions? Great. I didn't thank you. Okay. So we're going to wrap up the hearing tonight. But before everyone leaves, and I believe this is a special meeting, so there is no other business that we will discuss, only Red Bulls.
Other than the motion to adjourn.
Okay. We'll get to the motion to adjourn in a second. So we're going to be coming back. I'm going to ask you to have Mr. Amoroso just briefly, two minutes, just so everybody remembers where he left off.
Yep.
We'll go right to the public because the board members have asked their questions. So there's no reason for them to ask questions again. And we'll go from the public's questions of Mr. Amoroso to what, so that we all can be excited and thinking about this over the next two next two weeks. Who, who are we going to hear from next?
I think we'll hear from Bob Zeller. Mr. Zeller was the lighting expert who couldn't make it today. He said he can make it Monday. We believe, we believe. And so.
That's this Monday?
This Monday, right?
And how much time do you think he's going to need? No, I don't mean with questions. I mean for his testimony.
I'd say, yeah, I'd say a half hour.
Okay. So let's, let's, let's triple that because the board will have questions and the public, and I think everybody's very sensitive to the light. So there's going to be a lot of questions on that. Do we have any other applications for Monday?
No, we don't.
Okay. So then we should be able to get through your lighting expert in an hour and a half.
Right.
And then we should be able to get to whom?
Mr. Keller, who's our traffic expert.
Okay. So then we'll get through most of Mr. Keller's testimony with questions from the board. Okay, great. This way everybody knows.
And then, so you might want to think about another special meeting because, you know, the public comes to some of these meetings and, and for example, last meeting and, and you know, I know the board is working hard on every application, but we got 45 minutes. I'm not complaining for us. I get paid.
Yes, you are.
I get paid, everyone. I'm not understanding. But they're sitting around for all that time and we had 30 minutes. So we don't get much accomplished because they have so many questions. So I'm just saying, you may want to think about another special meeting after October 3rd. Just keep that in mind.
Are you asking us to consider a special meeting?
Of course.
Okay.
But, but because then we have the architect, the landscape architect and the planners.
Did he say October 3rd?
Yes.
That's Yom Kippur.
No, I think Yom Kippur is the 5th.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it. Okay. Then, Mr. Warner, can I ask for a motion to adjourn?
Well, no, because first we want to just one more time, Mr. Chairman, if I may, announce that this matter is being carried without further notice to Monday, October 3rd at 7:00.
7:00 p.m.
In person, the same location. The applicant will give us an extension of time to act through the month of October if we don't already have it in writing. Thank you, Mr. Rasiopis. And I believe now we can then move on. And I don't believe we have any other matters or any closed session. So we may be up to the motion to adjourn.
You get a motion to adjourn? Mr. Flowers, second?
Second.
Ms. Wilson, all in favor?
Aye.